All right, let's go ahead and get started. Evelyn, will you do the roll call?
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee King.
Here.
Trustee Marcus.
Here.
Vice President Weekly.
Present.
President Wells.
Here. Okay, welcome. Good evening, and it's the welcome to our September tenth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Redwood City District's School District School Board. Buenos noches, sir, querer interpretación en español, por favor llama el nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el signo de número. Si esté en persona, solicitando transmisores situado al fondo de la sala. Again, welcome. Thank you for joining us and being our partners in education. The board encourages you to participate and provide comments on issues of concern regardless of whether they are on the agenda. If you're here in person and you wish to speak, there are speaker cards at the entrance to the room. Just grab one, fill it out, and hand it to Evelyn. If you're on Zoom, then you can complete a speaker's card online that's linked from the agenda, or raise your Zoom hand when the item comes up. And if you're addressing a subject that's on the agenda, you'll be called with at the time that that item is being considered. If the issue is not on the agenda, you'll be called shortly during the oral communication agenda item, and then, to be fair to all speakers, we limit public comments to three minutes per person per topic unless otherwise noted. All right, let's move on for changes to the agenda. I have one proposal. I don't know if anybody else has any. I was going to propose that we move the the board's health evaluation discussion after like all our regular business, so probably after information. That way, anyone that's here for like regular board business is free freely. Okay, so that's concretely, that's nine point one is going to move after twelve point three. All right, perfect. Any other changes? No. Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, we'll move on to public comment. I'm looking to see if there are online cards. There are online cards. Oh, I'm looking around date.
Cindy Meek.
Yes, let me. I'm not sure why I'm not seeing it. Let me refresh the.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Cindy Meek, and I have been a teacher for fourteen years in the district. For the past several years, I have attended the new teacher orientation meetings that RCTA has with new teachers. Every year, there are about sixty new teachers. We have approximately three hundred and twenty teachers, so the retention rate is running seventy-five to eighty percent per year, which means we are losing twenty to twenty-five percent of our teachers every year. Studies have shown that replacing a teacher costs an average of twenty-five thousand dollars. That includes onboarding, training, mentorship, and sixty new teachers a year at twenty-five thousand dollars is one point five million dollars. The low retention rate indicates that many teachers have low morale. Part of the reason that morale is low is the lack of support, respect, and professionalism from senior management at the district. When you think about teachers' classroom, think of it as their office. This is their office where they conduct the business of teaching. Their clients are the students. In a business office, the temperature of the building is consistent, and you have the supplies you need for your job. The rollout of the permanent AC installations at four schools has been a hit and miss. Many teachers are happy, but other teachers have complained that some classrooms get cooler than others. There are also some classrooms that still don't have AC. There are examples at some sites where the AC is running along with the heater running at the same time. At Kennedy, we have four, we have portable AC units in all of our classrooms, and there are times when many classrooms have their portable ACs running, but an electric breaker goes off. All the classrooms lose power. The breaker is reset. Teachers are told that only some of them can use the portable AC units at the same time. All students in the district should have Chromebooks. However, most schools are short Chromebooks. It does not appear that student Chromebooks from last school year were repaired over the summer, as many students received the same Chromebook with the same technical issues. With many students still waiting for Chromebooks, the students should have alternative hard copy materials. There appears to be some classrooms that do not have enough textbooks for all students or any textbooks at all. There have been major issues regarding the Wi-Fi over the entire district for the past month, not just the past week. Many teachers experience slowing Wi-Fi after eleven thirty AM. As you can see, teachers are challenged with many issues out of their control. This constant struggle to get the right temperature in a classroom, Chromebooks that work for students and Wi-Fi that can be counted on eventually takes a toll on teachers, which leads to low morale. We bring this to your attention in hopes that the senior management of the district hears and addresses our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. And yeah, and thanks for sharing the experience at the school site with us. Evelyn, I have the wrong spreadsheet. So do you, are there any other speakers online?
That's the only one.
That's the only one. Okay, great. And then let me just double check Zoom to make sure that there's no participants raising their hands. Okay, let's move on to our next item, which is the approval of the bond consent items. Can I, we're going to approve these all in one motion? Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the bond consent items.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, let's move on to the bond action items. And seven point one is the approval of the preconstruction service agreement with Siemens Building Management for Phase Two of the HVAC.
Good evening, board. Dr. Baker.
I'm sorry, there's a, yeah, we have to turn the microphone on so we can hear. Yep.
It's like it's my first time. Good evening, board, Dr. Baker and staff. Thank you for having us here again to talk about moving along some projects for Measure S Bond. So the first of the two that we have on the agenda is the approval of the agreement for Siemens Building Management System to help us with the preconstruction services for Phase Two of the HVAC upgrade project. The board may recall back in June, the board approved Phase Two of the HVAC upgrade project to be Kennedy Middle School, Orion, and Clifford. So this is the next phase in design for that. And you also may recall from Phase One that Siemens is the district standard for building management system and mechanical controls. So on the agenda is the proposed agreement that is a piggyback contract from Source Wealth for the Siemens preconstruction. So the recommendation is approval of the Siemens agreement tonight.
Great. Do any of the trustees have questions or comments about this item? Okay, sounds good. Then I will look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Great, thanks. Let's move on to seven point two. So that's the contracts with QKA for design services for the HVAC upgrades.
Yeah, so again, this is for Phase Two of the HVAC upgrades. We did do an RFP, a request for proposals, to all the architects in our architect pool. We received four proposals, and QKA was the lowest proposal, and they had experience from Phase One. So that's why QKA is a recommendation for design services for Phase Two of the HVAC project tonight.
Sounds good. Any questions? Sounds like a good match. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the QKA contract.
All right, and a second? All in favor? Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our action items. Eight point one is discussion and action on the superintendent search firm with presentations and then selection. First, I want to say thank you, Evelyn, for doing all the coordination work. I think you'd reach out to like eight firms to try and get people to respond and send in presentations and proposals. So that was a pretty good set of outreach, and I know you're very responsive to the other trustees that added in their additional firms. Thanks for suggesting those. I want to remind everyone that tonight's an important step in our superintendent transition. We're going to be hearing presentation from three, what look like really three strong search firms, HYA, Leadership Associates, and Zell. Each of them are going to bring relevant experience and could support our district successfully. And so then our goal tonight, and this is a reminder, is not to just listen and ask questions, but it's also, we want to take action and select one firm. The reason that it's really important to do that tonight is just the timing. We want to begin the process right away so that we can have the most robust community involvement and feedback. You know, we want to be able to get us new superintendent in a place, and possibly, you know, if it works out, I mean, I don't know if this is all going to work out, but it might be possible to even have some overlap and transition time alongside superintendent Baker before the end of the school year. Delaying a decision even one meeting, and if we delayed it, it would probably actually go into like October or later, would really push that whole timeline back a bit. So I want to, I want to encourage us all to listen and focus on fit and readiness. No firm's going to be perfect. No offense to any of our presenters, but but each of them is really more than capable. So the critical thing is that we come together tonight, and you know, we reach consensus and move forward with a partner who we think can help us recruit the very best leader for Redwood City School District. So with that, I think our first presenter is going to be HYA. Is that right, Evelyn? Okay, and then I think we said we were going to do thirty minutes for presentation and for the trustees to be able to ask questions. So if you could try to keep the presentation in like the fifteen to twenty minute range, does that sound reasonable? Yeah, yeah, shorter's, shorter's fine, too, and that'll give us enough time to be able to ask questions.
The one on the right. Okay. Oh, perfect. Well, what I realized as I was sitting here at the, in the back, is that some of my slides that I meant to skip actually got printed and are in your packet, so I may not go through every slide in the packet. Good evening, I'm Dr. Stella Kemp. I am an associate with HYA. It's a national superintendent search firm. We're located in Illinois, but we serve all of the United States in superintendent search. My colleagues who will be assisting on the search are on vacation right now, so they were unable to attend. I want to start by saying congratulations to my colleague, because I used to be here in, in this county with Dr. Baker as a superintendent in San Bruno, and had the pleasure of visiting your schools to, as we were looking at launching the SEAL program in San Bruno Park some time ago. And so congratulations to John. I think he's done a great job, as I've watched from afar, and congratulations to the board also on being proactive and starting early. Do you want me to just tell you when to go to the next slide? Okay, so next slide, please. As you mentioned earlier, you know, the role of this, of the board is to hire the superintendent, and that is super critical, particularly, I think, in the last several years. That work has become very politicized and is and the community watches what the board is doing, because you're essentially, you're representatives of the community, hiring somebody to lead your schools. So HYA, what's different about HYA as, as you look at hiring a superintendent is that we are a nationwide company. We have the ability to recruit, and we have candidates that have expressed interest in districts like Redwood City that, that we can select from to bring to you as possible candidates. And that really happens after we have done the, the community input, and we kind of see exactly what the community says, what the board says, what the leaders say, what the teachers say, what the classified staff say, what your parents say, and so on. As you were looking for a candidate, we build a profile out of that candidate. Next slide, please. One of the things that I wanted to mention to you is that we have a large network, and that network includes individuals who receive our monthly newsletter, but we also have a pool of candidates that have, that go to and maintain an active personnel file with HYA. What's interesting about that is that, you know, very often when you're looking to hire a superintendent, the individual that's looking either to change positions or leave a superintendency to another school district is they want to make sure that they, their identity is maintained confidentially. They don't want their community knowing about this, because it could create a problem for them later on down the road. Our large network also has a number of associates. So we have associates all the way across the country, and so if HYA were be, were selected to be the firm to represent Redwood City in this, in this project, we would put the word out to our associates with the profile and saying, we're looking for someone with this particular profile. But in addition to that, we get uploads every night into our system, so we can see when new candidates are applying to positions. And frankly, Redwood City has a great reputation, so I'm sure there will be lots of applicants for this position. Next slide, please. Uh, next slide, thank you. Keep going. Sorry about that. Okay, so I wanted to share with you just really briefly. These are some of the past school districts that we have done searches in the Bay Area, and a lot of them are right here in the county. And so you've seen that. Most recently, we completed Santa Clara Unified, and that was led with my colleague, Dr. Valerie Pitts. Next slide, please. So this is a team right now that we have. We also have on standby, Dr. Camila Franco. She is a part of our group. She usually works in Southern California, but she is helping out Oakland with some of their, as their work that they're working on right now. And we are here, we have Spanish-speaking colleagues in our, in our team, and we will be here to support your community to gather input, and the input is going to be a variety of different ways, and I'll share that with you in a little bit. All of our colleagues that are, will be representing are former superintendents. Thank you. Next slide. So generally, when you do a search, you have this process where you have, you engage with your community, you build a profile, then you begin your recruitment. What I, what we will be doing is we will actually start the recruitment when we start the engagement process, so that we begin to see who's out there as we're hearing things from the board and from the community, and so that we can actually, because this is an accelerated search, you want to finish this by January, so we want to make sure that we're recruiting and getting the word out, and we have a variety of different ways that we do that, through postings, through links, through our website. A lot of people who are out looking for superintendent positions actually go to the HYA site, because we publish everybody's. We have everybody's openings that all the firms are posted to our site. I'm sorry about this. Should get a little bit further away from the microphone. All right, and then, then it becomes time, once we've recruited a pool, and we've, you know, we have the leadership profile, now it's time really to sort, sort through the candidates, work with the board to identify which candidates you'd like to bring forward for, for an interview. And, and those, that, that process really involves both training for the board on interview protocols to make sure that you are you're not violating any state or federal laws during that process. And I, I believe all the board members are new, have not gone through the superintendent search before. Is that correct? No? Yes, okay, good. And, and so we want to, we want to protect the district and protect the board, and the role for HYA is really, we are, we, we are your face. We are you out there in the public, and, and then we protect you and make sure you do everything by the book, so to speak, so that there are no questions about the process, or the interviews, or the questions, or any of that. That's all very clear and transparent to the candidate. One of the unique things that we do is we publish a leadership profile for the candidates that will be part of the interview process in a an activity that they have to engage in. So we'll give them data about the district's finance, or maybe educational data or something, and we'll give them a scenario then that will assist them in a, in a, an activity that they will present when they're, when they come forward for an interview. And then the transition time, and there's a variety of different things that could happen in the transition from HYA sitting down with a candidate and reviewing the community feedback, to a transition with the board and helping to establish goals, or coaching and so on. But the first thing that happens, I think the most important, is the next few weeks, and that is engaging with the board. My colleagues will be back on the seventeenth of September, and we're excited to come and meet with the board shortly thereafter if we're selected, and, and plan out meeting times, look at, look at the survey, look at when the board wants to have their, their, their interviews, all kinds of things that are going to happen. We intend to bring the leadership profile to you at the November meeting, and which would be, by the, by the way, the time that we would fed, had all of our engagement, our focus groups, and have all that calendar ahead of time. And then probably we'll be working closely with Evelyn on a lot of these things and getting this calendar. All right, next slide, please. All right, so I'm, one of the things I want to point out here is that as you're looking at the slides for, for us, is that if you see the slides that have a blue box around it, that's really where we are different from the other firms. Next slide, please. So the, as you can see, there's a lot of different ways, and all of the firms, you know, do a really good job with community engagement, community input. I think what's really important is that we set up a schedule. We have a point person that we, probably Evelyn will be our point person at the district or one of the board members, and, and we'll set up these meetings, come out here for a couple of days, meet face to face with people, and then also have an opportunity to meet with people in the evening. If it's on the weekend, that the board desires that we host something for the weekend, we can schedule those focus groups and community forums. We can do it, I think, by trustee area might be a good way to do that, and be available just to listen, because this is really what it is, is listening and, and hearing what the community would like for two things. Where do you see the district needing to pivot or improve, or some need of improvement, and then what is the leadership that's going to go with that? So it's kind of a two-pronged thing, which gets really into our survey, and that stakeholder survey is is if you go, go a couple more slides forward, one, two, three, three slides, slide thirteen. Yes, yes, thank you, slide thirteen. I think it's back. There you go. Is this survey, you know, in order to build a good picture of the school district, you're also campaigning for candidates to come forward, so you want to make sure that the candidate understands what the community's desire is, so we can match the leadership style with the community needs, with the board's desires. And so that what we do is we really look for assets that, that are, we look for, what are the strategies, or what are the qualities of a school district that has high, high student outcomes, and are showing growth, and then match that with the right leadership style, and so we look for that, and we want to hear what the community has to say, and that kind of blends into that survey. So you're going to get a survey results from us, and the survey is, is in Spanish and English. We can add other languages if you'd like that, and we'll give a resort, a report, not a resort, a report in Spanish and English as well. And so we disaggregate it for you, so you can see, you know, what do the teachers say, what do the admins say, what did the parents say, what did, we can sort it by grade level, any, any way you want to slice and dice that data, it really helps to give that information to you. And we can customize the survey if you want to add some other, other elements to it. So I think this is one of the big, strong things that HYA does. Okay. All right, so if you go to slide sixteen, please. So in our recruitment phase, one of the assets, or one of the aspects of HYA that's kind of different than than many of the firms that are out there is that HYA is a partner with AAAS, so at a national level, we're a partner with the American Association of School Superintendents, and we also are a partner with the the AAAS and Howard University Urban Superintendent's Certification Program. And that's actually how I came to know HYA, was because I was in that urban superintendent's program with them. And so they have a, a large pool of individuals that are interested to become superintendents. They also have a partnership with CALSA and with ALIS, which are the Latino associations, national and state, and they are represented at state, national conferences. The one thing about the timeline that's a little unfortunate is that this national superintendent's conference is in February this year, so hopefully we'll have this wrapped up by then, but the state conference, State Leadership Conference is coming up in November, so you know, for sure, we'll have individuals there to represent HYA, but the word will be out already. All right. So also, I wanted just to mention that you can also go to our website, and HYA has an active searches page and has a network of associates, and you can see all the associates that we have across the nation who would be contributing to this project. All right, so if we can go over to slide number nineteen. Thank you. So because we tailor the candidate's skills with their competencies, our, in our candidate profile system, this allows HYA and potential candidates to match. Not saying we're matchmakers, but we do, as best as we can, try to match the leadership skills with, with the desire of the district and within the system based on our, on the leadership profile that's been developed. So, and again, I want to just reemphasize that we build a lot of confidentiality within the system so that candidates feel comfortable with applying to us, and they know that their name is not going to, going to get released, unless they have to be released. In some states, it's required that you publicly notice when you're bringing a finalist forward. Okay, all right, and if you could go to, I think you've seen the recruitment and the screening and the recruitment consideration slides. I wanted to go on to the interview protocols, slide twenty-three, and just point out that on the interview protocols, that we work with the board just to make sure that you're following best practices and all legalities around that. And we will have case study that's developed, that's based on the data brief that we prepare for the candidates, and that really helps them. And when I was applying for superintendent positions, they didn't have any of this. So I did my own data brief of every school district that I applied to, and it's, and it's a really great asset, because you come in already having an understanding of like where, where some of the academic challenges might be, or, or other factors that appear like on the dashboard. You know, these were days before we had the California dashboard the way we do now, so a lot of research goes into helping prepare the candidates, so they hit the ground running. All right, and then if you would go over to slide number twenty-five. So one of the things that we do in, in the selection of candidates for the interview is we do this blindly, so we will try to reduce bias as much as possible by providing the board with the applicants, but it's, it's been, lots of stuff's been redacted in there, so you, you know, don't, can't make an opinion of whether it's a male or a female, or, you know, Asian, black, Hispanic, or whatnot. And so this is really kind of behind the scenes. We do this blind review to help you make sure that you're looking at all candidates sort of on an equal playing field and reduce that bias. Okay. All right, and if you would please go over to slide number thirty-one, thirty-one. Thirty-two, I'm sorry. So one of the things that, that HYA does is part of our recruitment, is we create a portal for the board, and in that portal, we dot, we dump all of our documents in there. We have everything there for you, so we try not to print anything out. We can, if you'd like for that to happen, and if you go on to slide number thirty-three, you'll see the, the examples of things that are in, in that. So we have all the updates, we have our Zoom links, we have our, our candidate posting, you can go, it's linked there, you can go to it. You can see the interview schedule, you can see all of the different things that we have in place for, for the board to help them through this process, and it's available twenty-four seven. And of course, Valerie, myself, and Bob will be available twenty-four seven for the board as well. Twenty-four, seven, maybe twenty-two, seven. Anyway, so I wanted to just kind of, in closing, before I move on to the timeline, is I wanted to talk a little about the interview process. You know, I, Eric knows this. I was always a bridesmaid, bridesmaid, never the bride. I was like number two. I interviewed so many times before I became a superintendent. And I've been through a lot of interviews, and, and I've been where the board has decided that they want to do a community forum, and they bring a group of people in, and they do that. I've been in interviews where it's just the board at the, at the Audi dealership in town, you know, they were, you know, hiding, hiding from the small community, and they had us off-site. I've been in, in interviews where they had us do group interviews. So there's a lot of different ways the board may want to do their interviews, and so we'll talk with the board, find out what's been done in the past, you know, look at what the best practices are, and talk about the pros and cons of all the different ways that you guys could conduct the interviews, whether you want to bring in a community group, just, you know, knowing the, the complications that might arise around that. So with that, I'd like to go on to slide number thirty... I guess the next one, it's the timeline side. So I was, I tried not to be too specific on it, but I think looking at the timeline, September fifteenth, sixteenth through the beginning of October would really be that first set of events. We would launch the survey as soon as we have that ready to go, so that could be earlier in September. That would go through November, December. We're going to try to wrap all of that up. You know, you might want to keep the survey open a little bit longer, but our survey is, 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 it's in-house developed, and it's research-based. It's really targeted on leadership qualities and high-performing school districts, and looks for that match. And then we develop the leadership profile along with the profile of the district. We'll present that to the board in November. And then I'm looking at interviews probably after CSBA. The twelfth and thirteenth of December is kind of what I had penciled in. Again, my colleagues are in Europe, I can't ask them, so. But we'll be here at middle of December, and then with appointment in January. So that is kind of very quickly an outline of the process for HYA superintendent search.
Thank you. I see the next one's question, so I will turn to the board and see if anybody has questions that they'd like to ask. Jen, please start.
Thank you for that. I was just wondering in terms of when you present the slate, what information is coming with the candidates that you're providing us?
Yeah, so we have, we'll, we'll do our due diligence, so we'll, we'll start reference, we'll start reference checks on the people that they provided to us. We'll do the deeper, deeper, deeper reference checks following the, as we get closer to the interview. So once you've decided, okay, we're going to interview these five people, we'll go and start doing our deeper reference checks, but we'll do initial reference checks at the beginning when you bring the slate.
Any like analysis against the Any like analysis against the leadership profile that's built?
Oh, yes, all of that. Because we will tell you that, and that match, when we bring the slate to you. So we'll say, this person has the strengths in, you know, ELD development, in budget development, and, you know, fiscal services or something like that. Yeah, we'll bring all of that to you with that.
Great. Anyone else?
Really appreciate the presentation there. I do have some hard questions. I have them for the other ones too, so it's not just you. But there was a case where Minneapolis Board had to rescind an offer just a couple days after extending because of discovery about a candidate's performance in a prior role. There's another HYA pick where a superintendent was recommended in Flint, whose resume included degrees he didn't earn. And a Nashville pick resigned after it turned out that they didn't have full disclosure about what happened with two prior posts. So I'm just wondering, what are you going to do differently to better diligence the candidates that your firm presents us than happened in those cases?
So I can't speak to the work that happens outside of the California, myself, Valerie, and yes, that group. I think that due diligence, like for example, you know, personnel records, and sometimes they're not public, so I, you know, you may not know that. And there might be examples of why a information was found out later. Of course, when we're doing our due diligence, we're turning over every leaf that we can, yes. And so we're doing, you know, Google searches, calling people off the list. So that's the thing, is like, well, you do your first reference checks, you're looking for people, they put down their friends, but then you do the second one, you're diving deeper.
And that would include like degree verification as well?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
David?
I think you mentioned that some of your colleagues are also doing some other work in Oakland, and it sounds like right now is maybe a little bit of an off-season compared to other engagements relatively. At any given time, how many other engagements are, would the team, is the team typically working on?
Well, right now, there aren't a lot of superintendent searches occurring. So that usually starts to spool up after the holidays. But we are working on strategic planning and coaching for school districts.
I guess, underlying my question is, everyone wants to be the special snowflake, right? And get all the attention.
Yes.
But obviously, there are competing demands. So I'm trying to get a sense of, what is the, what are the other competing demands? Like, what does that realm look like for the associates, consultants that are working on your team during this time period that we're projecting?
I think the competing demands would be those who have travel arrangements already that can't be rescheduled. I actually have a wedding, my daughter's wedding in October, but I can be here, you know, I, we'll work around that. But, you know, for the most part, I think that some of the engagement, like if we do the engagement at the very front end, like early October, then it's just a matter of putting the profile together, looking at the survey results, making sure we're working with Evelyn to get push-out messages through your communication channels, you know, letting you guys know how many respondents we've had. Let's do another push to get people out there, and so on. So it's really, you know, getting the system set up, doing the face-to-face early, and then letting all of that, it's the middle of October when my daughter's getting married, to let that sort of, you know, start to come in.
Got it. So I think I mentioned to you, it sounds like the heavy lifting is upfront, and then that hopefully is leading to a relatively light lift through the majority of the process, in your view?
And then we'll come back in November with a presentation, and then start working on, we may have to have a, you know, board workshop on, or a special board meeting on the interview and all of that stuff. So that's all happens in closed session, that piece. Yeah.
Supper question. Would be curious to hear if you have any experience or anecdotes that you can speak to where you've worked on community engagement, the full community, where the communities may be fragmented in some ways, either racially, socio-economically, linguistically, or otherwise? If you can share any challenges or experiences that you've gone through where you've worked through that sort of dynamic?
I don't know which one to pick. Should I pick the school closure in San Bruno Park?
Please, if you'd like.
So when I was appointed Superintendent in San Bruno Park, the county was, it was short on state receivership, and the county said, you need to close three schools. And my first day there, actually even before I took the job, I drove the district, and I went, there is no way you can close three schools because you have the school down on El Camino, then you had the hillside going up to 280, and then you had a school above 280. And I said, how are we going to get, move people around? It was impossible. So I went and negotiated that, but we ended up having to close, you know, we negotiated two schools instead of three, and then started looking at the impact of this. And there were a lot of people that came out. And in the schools that I was recommending, one of the two schools I was recommending actually did not, did not get selected for a potential consolidation. So then we had to think about, okay, so what are we going to do, given the access to the school that was, that we were recommending for consolidation was on the side of a hill and very challenging to get to? We had to regroup. So through this entire process, though, we were out talking to the schools, we were getting input, we were asking for alternate solutions, we tried to develop out those alternate solutions. And then finally, when it came time, we said, let's do one at a time. We're going to, we're going to do one at a time. So we ended up closing the school that was the smallest, that had the most students that were on intra-district transfers. And then in the process, it was a very simple process of redrawing the boundaries because we basically had El Camino, and we had, what is it, east of El Camino, west of El Camino. And that's kind of how we draw our boundaries, and we were able to balance the students out in other existing campuses.
So I guess maybe more of the question is focused on the community engagement piece to get a sense of how you were able to ensure that you were getting input from the wide variety, obviously a very complicated situation. But I guess, yeah, how were, tactically, how are you doing that? And then how are you able to ensure that you were actually getting the views of multiple?
Yeah, so we had a committee, and we engaged our committee to help us get to the parents. So they understood, A, the story, that they were like, understood exactly what was happening. So we leveraged, in this case, a superintendent search. You would leverage your principals to get your, or your PTA presidents, or the board members to, you know, to help us engage the community and get a message out, inviting the community to come to a forum or to an open house. You know, all those kinds of things are really kind of word of mouth, but also the publications, and then making opportunities available. Like, you know, we created, for example, we created a webpage that was a Q&amp;A page. Somebody had a rumor, rumor, you know, I heard a rumor, send it in, and then we would, we would respond to that rumor. So we were able to keep the message straight. Yeah.
Did you have questions? I have one more, but it's.
I wanted to give Cecilia a chance.
Thank you again for the presentation. And my question would be, obviously, you're going to try to find the best-fit candidate. At the end of the day, is going to be up to the board, who they decide to hire. And from your experience in placing superintendents, how long do they stay at a school district?
HYA's candidates, more than 95% of our candidates stay within the, stay beyond the first term of their contract. So, but it, there are so many factors to a superintendent's longevity that, you know, you're trying to find the best, you're trying to find the best fit for the day that you hire the superintendent. And things change, boards change, things happen. So you try to find somebody that's going to fit the best at that point. And, you know, we, HYA candidates, they stay in the districts, and sometimes they even move to larger districts beyond this. Yes.
David Lee, you said you had one more question? Go ahead. By all means.
I just curious, very specifically for Redwood City, if you, I think you mentioned that your perception is that Redwood City is an attractive district for potential candidates. I'm curious, what specifically, what assets is specifically you have, or that you have identified for Redwood City in that respect, and as well as any challenges that you foresee?
Well, the asset, I think, is the strong leadership that currently exists in the district. And, you know, Dr. Baker is, has set quite the bar, has set a high bar. And someone coming after him will have, you know, large shoes to fill because he's an amazing superintendent. And so those in the area who know Redwood City know about the longevity of leadership, they know about the solid school board, which is important for a candidate coming in, knowing that the school board is, you know, is focused on the right things. And I think that that, those are the two big things for candidates. They're looking for a board that's, that is focused on every student being successful, that there is a system in place and a plan in place, and the leadership has led that, and there will be a transition plan for the next superintendent coming in that will be based on your input, Dr. Baker's recommendations, and also what the community says in terms of what their desires are for the school district. The challenges are that there might be a lot of really good candidates that come forward. And so, you know, sorting through those and finding the one that's the best fit for the board is going to be the challenge. You're welcome.
Sounds like a good challenge to have. The one question I wanted to ask was just to clarify. You mentioned that there are Spanish speakers on the staff, as associates. Does that mean that the community outreach events can be held directly in Spanish, not necessarily through interpretation?
Yes.
Okay, great. 20 seconds, one more question. David Wiegley.
You mentioned that there aren't a lot of other superintendent searches happening right now. Are we doing this process strangely to go and pull things up so much?
No. I know Sonoma Valley is doing a superintendent search for a superintendent right now that's being run through the Sonoma County Office of Ed. But otherwise, that's the only one that I know of in the area. There might be others, but.
So it's more just coincidence, nobody else?
Just coincidence, yes.
All right, Dr. Kemp, thank you so much for coming and presenting HYA for us tonight.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah. We can move on to Leadership Associates. Right. And I'll give the same time kind of constraints. You know, we want to maybe keep it in the 15 minutes to 20 minutes for the presentation side, and then that'll give us 10 to 15 minutes for the trustees to be able to ask questions. Perfect.
I'm, well, good evening, and thank you all so very much for allowing us to come and make our presentation to you. We certainly appreciate it, and are very, very happy that we were one of the firms selected for you to take a look at. So, next slide, please. So this is your team. My name is Jackie Horsch. I was a superintendent for nine years in San Jose, in Union School District. I was also, I do just a lot of things, as Eric and I both do. I teach in the Administrative Credential Program. I do superintendent coaching, I do board workshops. So I've had an awful lot of experience, and I have been doing searches for the last nine years. And I, full disclosure, I did work for a large national search company for a short while before I joined Leadership Associates. And I say that because when I was listening to your last board meeting, when you were talking about how you were going to select a search firm, you talked about wanting to really see what's the differentiation. You're going to see very much the same processes. So we're going to focus on trying to let you know, what's the difference between these firms? So I'll let Eric introduce himself next.
I'm Eric Andrew. I am a retired superintendent of the Campbell Union School District, which is an interesting district in the sense that it's 12 schools, six were Title I, six were affluent. So it was quite the dichotomy to make sure that all of our students got the same type of education along the way. I will tell you that this is my only search. I've been very discreet, I'm very discreet on taking searches. I only look at districts where I feel like I want to make a difference in that district, and I think I want to work with this particular board and this community. And so I can dedicate myself to this particular search, the only one that I have, the only one that I volunteered for was Redwood City.
I'm not sure he volunteered, he was solicited. That being said, let me introduce, by way of her picture, the third member of our team. She will be boots on the ground, but she's in Turkey right now. I received her latest email, and she couldn't make it, didn't feel she'd be able to zoom in. But she is a fluent bilingual Spanish speaker, and she will be right here working with us. Between us, Eric, how many searches would you think we've done?
Probably in the 40s.
Yeah. We have a lot of experience. Many of the searches that you're going to see in your packet Eric and I have done together, some of the other searches I have done with Blanca. So we're a very experienced team. Next slide, please. So speaking of teams, I really want to point this out as one of the differentiators. We have our search specialists, and you'll see Linda Penny and Serena. They have all been executive assistants in school districts. So they're going to be working really closely with Evelyn. They know what it takes, and they know what her job is. So they will be providing 24/7 assistance, both to her and, you know, your board liaison, the board president, or whoever you select. We really, you know, believe that you need to be communicated with. You're going to get weekly updates from one of us, possibly all of us. So you'll be kept in the loop the entire way through the process. One of the things that we believe strongly in, and I'm sure you do as a board, no surprises, this search is your search, we customize it however you want to do it, and we know that you need to be in the loop on every step of the way. Thank you, next slide. So I want to let you know that we didn't bring a canned presentation. We looked carefully at your criteria, we tried to design our presentation to specifically meet what it was that you said you wanted. And I remember hearing that you wanted clarity and differentiation. So this gives you just an overview of our process, and it's going to sound an awful lot like what you just heard, because the processes are very similar. But as we go through the process, we want to point out, what makes us different? Why would you select us instead of another firm? So we're going to go to the next slide, and we're going to ask you to take a look at that next page on your handout, please. Okay, so, and I didn't bring my handout with me. So one of the things I want to talk to you about is the process we're going to use. And that will be the initial meeting that we're going to have with you, and hopefully you have it there. Everybody have a chance to look at it. We're going to finalize the timeline with you. So on that very first meeting that we have, we're going to go through all of those questions in the initial meeting so that we can find out what works for you. How do you want to do this? When do you want to do it? And make sure that the calendar is set for the entire process. And this is going to be done in an open session, so your community will understand what we're doing.
One of the questions that was asked before was how do we know that we can hear the voices of the various community members? And what we will do is ask you specifically, who are the voices that we need to reach out to? And who are the voiceless? Who are the communities that you have here, who you have not had a chance, they've not come to your meetings, they aren't as engaged? And what we've done in the past is, we are willing to go to those communities. An example, I was in a situation where there was an apartment complex, very large complex, very much a pillar in the community, but the parents weren't involved in the school. We went to that apartment complex to do the community input. We didn't wait for them to come to us. And so we're willing to do those types of things. But we want to make sure that we hear from you, and as we are working with other community groups, and they, we will ask them the question, who's missing? Whose voice is missing in this group? And who else do we need to reach out to? And so as a result of that, we are willing to have as many community input sessions as we need to make sure all voices have a chance to participate.
And I want to point out that when you take a look at fee structures, you're going to see that the fee structure of most of our competitors has X number of days that they're going to do. That's not us. What Eric is telling you is the absolute truth. I can't, we spent two weeks doing community input sessions because it was a district that had a lot of, a lot of different stakeholders. We've talked to fire chiefs, we talked to city council, we talked to whoever it is that you want us to talk to. And that's why it's so important during this initial meeting for you to identify all the various groups in your community. Now, that doesn't preclude the survey, because we're also doing a survey, and we do it in every language that you would like us to do it in. There's no extra cost. And again, I think when you take a look at our competitors, they're going to have a survey, but their survey has an additional cost. survey, but their survey has an additional cost. Our survey has the same analytics in any language that you want, and it's, there's no hidden fees. We're not going to nickel and dime you. We're here to serve you, and that's what we believe we do best. So going along with that, you can see that we're going to talk with you in this initial meeting about all of these things. And most importantly, finding out from you, what do you want to see in the next superintendent? What are the challenges that you need to make sure that that next candidate that you're going to look at has the skills in order to meet those challenges? Next slide. And again, please look at your packet, because this is far too small, but this is the timeline, and hopefully it's in your packet, you can see it a little larger. We believe that we can accomplish this without any problem at all, we believe it's very realistic. There are three of us who are going to be boots on the ground here with you, in addition to, as you'll hear, the partners that we have. Next slide, please. Okay, we've talked a little bit about that. We have not just a consultant, but one of our team members is Spanish speaking. We talked about the survey and all various languages that you need. One of the things that's important for us is finding out from all your stakeholders, what the entire community, those voices that may not be the loudest, what does everybody want? And we put that together in the position description, and that's what we use as we advertise and recruit, which we'll be talking about in a minute. And then you are going to get an executive summary of all of the input that we have. And in addition to that, you will get all of the actual raw data, with all of the comments and everything, from both the stakeholder input sessions as well as the survey. Eric?
Next slide, please. One of the unique differences with Leadership Associates is that we are all partners in the firm, we're not consultants. This is our main job. And so every other Tuesday, we just had it a couple of days, yesterday, we have meetings with all of the partners, and we discuss every single search. So although Jackie, myself, and Blanca will be the faces here, the reality of it is, you will have all of our partners as a part of this particular search. And that makes us very much unique. You see, we cover California well? Yes, we are California-centric, absolutely. But we do have a wide range of national presence, because as we are considered the number-one search firm, people come to our websites, and we get people who are applying from around the world, actually. Not just nationally, but around the world for our positions. Next slide, please. Our advertisement, we will put in all the trade magazines, for those of you who are familiar with ED Cow, which is the California Association of School Administrators magazine. It's probably the one newsletter that's read from the back forward, because all of the jobs are in the back. And so people look at that, we will absolutely advertise there. We currently have about 1,500 subscribers, we'll put it on all of the various social media aspects and those types of things. Our reference checks, we do a good job of ensuring that we are doing our best to make sure that our candidates are who they say they are. And then finally, we do conduct screening interviews with all of our candidates. One of the questions we ask both the candidate and the references is, what would your admirers say about you? And what would your critics say about you? And we do some triangulation about that to get a sense of, if the candidate says, here's what my critics would say about me, yet the people we're referencing would have something different, that kind of is a red flag for us, because that's, we're looking at self-awareness and so on. So we want to know, how well can we get to know that candidate? Next slide, please. I'll just kind of skip through this one, these are just some of the organizations that we are part of, there are others there, but very similar to the previous presenter, we are a part of those organizations. In fact, one of the differences is that our partners have been the executive directors of several, or board members of several of those organizations. Next slide, please. Recruitment. We currently not only have a search, a search firm, but if you notice our title, it's executive leadership. We currently have, for example, over 200 current superintendents who are part of a leadership development program. We have 45 leadership networks. We have between five and 10 various superintendents in each of those. We are out there not only developing the skillset of current superintendents, but it also keeps us informed as to what's happening on the field. We're retired. And so we want to make sure we're in contact with the current superintendents, that they are informing us as to, here are some of the context and the landscape that we are dealing with. We give them an opportunity not only to talk and to share ideas and get the best thoughts, but also it does inform our thinking as well.
And before I ask for the next slide, so I am doing, I have done an aspiring superintendent series, and I'm doing another aspiring superintendent series this fall. So we have an opportunity to meet those candidates that are interested in becoming a superintendent, and that have the experience that will enable them to become a superintendent in the future. So this is why we tell you that we believe that we can give you the deepest pool of candidates, is because our business is about leadership, and we do, I think, just an exemplary job of building the leadership capacity, so that we have a number of people who are ready to go into that next level. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we're very proud of is that we have an electronic portal for all of you. You will be given access to all of the candidate materials electronically. You'll see everything, we don't screen it out. You see every single piece of their packet that they turn in to us, okay? We will be looking at all of the candidates. We do a pre-screening interview with everyone who is a viable candidate, and I say that because honestly, you won't believe it, I had a search where a person who was a manager at three-day blinds and was substitute teaching, applied for a superintendency. So, and believe it or not, I did call her anyway, but we do do pre-screening interviews with all the candidates. And one of the things about that map that you saw, where all of our 14 partners are, we know people who know people, okay? So anyone who's, most people who are going to apply for a superintendent position have worked someplace else. And so because of that, we're able to really do a deep dive and a reference check, and unlike some of our competitors, we don't just do that with the people that you've decided are your finalists. We do that with everyone, and the reason is, we're going to give you a tiered list of candidates. Now, this is just a recommendation of those candidates that we think best match what you're looking for, have the experience, as well as the skills and attributes, so that they can meet the challenges that your district faces. We give you these recommendations after you've had a chance to look at all of the applicants, and we don't tell you our recommendations. We allow you to look at everybody, so that you have an objective look, and then we'll talk to you when we meet with you, and tell you why we've had the people tiered as we do. We tell you the good, the bad, and the ugly. Trust me, there are a lot of candidates who have baggage, and we want to share that with you. It's your choice. If the baggage is something that that candidate may have, that you don't feel is going to be a problem for you, if the person is selected, that's fine. You get to pick any of the candidates that you wish to interview or not. But we do try to give you at least an inkling of people that we really feel meet what we have found out in our extensive stakeholder inputs. So also, I wanted to let you know that we participate in all of the final interviews. I know our competitors do not. So we're there with you, we hold your hand, we make the questions with you, we're there to help facilitate the interviews, and help with contract negotiations, et cetera.
I'm just going to do a quick time check to let you know, there's only about three minutes left.
Okay. Do you want to go to, if you look in your packet at our searches, our recent searches, if you look the last couple pages, two pages, Eric, if you'd speak to that? Slide 15.
And so one of the things you did ask as part of the profile was, what are some of the searches that we've done in the Bay Area? We're based, we're Bay-centric, the two of us, and so we do a lot of searches here in the Bay Area. And this is just an example of some of the districts that we've had the privilege of, recent privilege of conducting some superintendent searches.
And the next one?
Next slide. And you asked about regarding Spanish-speaking communities. Here are some of the Spanish-speaking communities that we have had the privilege of working with, and Jackie and I have done several of these together, in fact. So we just wanted to make sure that we are touching bases on the things that you felt as a board were important, that we were responsive in that sense.
And if you go to the last slide, which is the why us? Cost and services, yeah, why us? Okay. Let me just close with this, because I think this is what's really important. As you said at the beginning of this meeting, you're going to be making a decision, so let me let you know why I think the decision should be that we're selected. In the first place, we partner with you to make sure that the needs of your district are going to be met. We work hard to understand what those needs are. I told you about our broad network of leadership development, that's why we think that we can give you the best pool of candidates. Our website, we're the go-to place. If somebody wants to be a superintendent in the state of California, they go to Leadership Associates. We are the go-to place for placing people. If you take a look, we're very, very committed to diversity. If you look at our statistics, last year, 66% of the finalists were either women or people of color. We've done over 750 searches in the state of California, and even though we're based in California, we've placed more national candidates in California than any other search firm. As Eric said, we're partners, there are 14 of us. This is what we do, we're not hired guns. We do this full-time, well, as full-time as a retired person can. And we're very active in all of the aspects of public education. We teach, we coach, we work with boards. Over 85% of the superintendents have been in their position for more than five years. And trust me when I say this, not only are our fees, what we believe, competitive, we have no hidden fees. Other than what you see on that cost structure, that's it. We don't charge you by the day, we don't charge you for the extra time, we don't charge you for the survey. So what you see is what you get. And, yes, sorry, we...
No, I was, I was going to, that's great. So you hit the last bullet, and so I was going to pivot into questions from the trustees, but thank you so much for the presentation, really appreciate it. Who would like to, who has a question that would like to start? David Lee, I see you looking very questioned.
No, I think you have the, I think you had the benefit of hearing the other questions, so thank you for already answering many of them in advance. I think the only one I had left was, I think the last one I asked was just basically, if there are any challenges or particular assets that you see with Redwood City in particular that you would bring, that come to mind, looking forward in the search.
Well, I know declining enrollment is always a concern. I know in the past you've, you know, closed several schools. I think everyone in the state of California, of course, is looking at budget reductions potentially, so that's always going to be a challenge facing districts. Hiring high-quality staff because of the cost of living in your area, I think is also something that's challenging for you. You have, in terms of things that I think you should be so proud of, of course, all the things that our colleague has mentioned. You have a great board, you have had wonderful, stable, high-quality leadership from your superintendent in the past, you're a destination district because of the programs that you offer students, you have so many alternative programs, high-quality, you serve your multilanguage learners and support their success amazingly. So there are just a lot of things that I think will be very attractive. I have no doubt that you'll get a huge pool of candidates who are interested here. Eric?
The only thing I wanted to add was, in all of your documentation, watching your board meetings, you're student-focused.
Yeah.
You're very, very student-focused, and I think that will be an attractor for a lot of people to realize that, no, they're about kids. Your board goals, they're about kids. Your programs that you have for choices and so on, it's about kids. And so I think that is really something that's going to pull great candidates to your district.
Jen, do you have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation, and I like this discussion sheet for the initial meeting. I was just wondering, of your recent ones, which you would consider a successful search and process? What has the board kind of done to prepare, or done differently, or done during these initial meetings?
I think most commonly is that they've read the materials, they came prepared, they literally just came prepared, and they asked good questions. You know, they challenged and pushed back, and we're very much open to that. But we really want you to feel, this is your search. Our role is to accommodate what you need as a district, as a board, and we're willing to do that. But they really have done the work. We're going to do our part by, as Jackie mentioned, giving you talking points, so that when your community asks, what's going on in the superintendent's search, we're going to give you talking points to be able to use, to let them know, here's where we are in the search process, so we're not going to wait for the markers on the timeline to do that. We want to make sure that you and the, and the community are engaged.
And actually, real quickly, the most important thing for that initial meeting is bring your calendars.
Cecilia, do you have any questions?
Not really. I really appreciate the thorough presentation, and the fact that you did your homework by listening to our board meetings prior to this, so I appreciate that. When you ask candidates, or when you're looking at candidates, do you ask them the same questions to move through the qualifying process?
No, if you're, well, if you're talking about the pre-screening questions, because we do pre-screen all of the viable candidates, no, you know, we look at the paperwork, and every person has different experiences. So depending on what it is that they're, that we see, you know, we'll ask them, look, you've left your job every two years. Why have you bounced around? What was that about? And then, of course, as I mentioned, because we know people who know people, we then call those other districts, the people that we know, and say, hey, you know, so-and-so told us this. What's the scoop? You know? So it does depend on what we find out about the candidate, what we ask them when we screen them. And then after the pre-screening interview, we really start getting to know those candidates that we believe will be your top one or two tiers. So we have lots of follow-up contact with them.
Yet there are some standard ones. Why Redwood City? And why are you applying? What makes you a match for this district? Again, I mentioned earlier, what would your admirers say about you? What would your critics say about you? And so those types are standard, but as Jackie said, as we look at their profile, that will help drive some of the other questions that we do have.
David Weegley?
I promised tough questions for all the different firms, and I've got one for you. Leadership Associates withdrew from a search in Fresno after insufficient community feedback and failing to provide community listening notes to the board president. What are you going to do differently here to make sure that the community is fully engaged, and that the board can be kept appraised of the listening to our notes?
I can't answer all that. And the reason for, there's some confidentiality. We willingly pulled out of that search. We pulled out it, so it wasn't a case where, we pulled out of that search for a number of reasons. But here's the thing that does happen, we're not perfect, but what we do do is go back on these Tuesday meetings, have conversations, and think, what can we do better? And in fact, we've had three incidents where we've changed our application to ask more specific questions based on incidents that happened in other districts along the way. So we take it seriously, we talk about it, and our job is always to get better at what we do.
And let me just add also that our firm is now much more discriminating about which districts we're going to work with. And I hate to say it that way, but there are some districts that we simply will not put in an application, because we don't want to work with them. We learn from past mistakes.
I'm assuming that the fees that you quoted include the background checks, validation of... I'm assuming that the fees that you quoted include the background checks, validation of credentials, all that. Yeah. I noticed the statistics that you gave indicate eighty five percent success for five years. And I'm just wondering how that compares to the previous firm that presented that ninety four percent succeeded in making it through their first term? Like, how would you compare those apples and oranges?
Well, the first term is typically three years, a three year contract. Whereas ours, we're talking about beyond that three year contract, but for five years.
And would you say that that compares favorably with other firms in general?
I think we are by far have the longest longevity. We are very serious with the candidates. You're asking the other common questions. If we bring a candidate forward for your, your top one, two, three, four, five or six candidates, I will tell you, we are very serious with them. We need you to stay five years. Second of all, if they choose not to and they want to apply for one of our jobs within a Leadership Associates, we will not take them on. We will tell them you cannot apply for that particular job. So that's one of the reasons and how we are able to do that. But we talk about it. No, the expectation is five years. After five years, all bets are off, to be frank with you. But five years is what we tell our candidates. Other questions in the last minute? I'll ask the same one, just to absolutely make sure that because you have a Spanish speaker on your team, does that, that means the community outreach to the Spanish community will be held in Spanish, not through translation, right? I almost recommend both. I always recommend both. I, I, I do. I think there will be some who will be more comfortable if that's the format that you've used in the past. Not only translation. Perfect. All right. Well, Dr. Horst and Dr. Andrew, thank you so much for coming and presenting Leadership Associates to us tonight. I see that we have Zell online, so I think we can switch to our next presentation. Thank you guys so much. Good luck to you.
Hello there.
Hello.
I, my name is Jeff Melendez. I apologize for the, 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 the background here. I'm, I'm actually at a truck stop on my way home from an all day flight back from Bogota, Colombia, where we were doing some work. And so I apologize, but I'm really of this opportunity. I had sent, am I showing my screen or would, are, are you guys going to share our presentation?
Jeff, whichever you prefer. I have it ready here. Or if you want to share your screen as well, that works.
Yeah, I can share my screen. That'd be great. Just give me one moment. Okay, can, can you see that?
It hasn't quite loaded. Sorry, it hasn't quite loaded up yet.
Okay.
We see, we see that you started screen sharing, but not the content. Yeah, I'll do it. And then you can just next slide during the presentation.
Okay, sure. That's not a problem. So I'll stop sharing. Evelyn, I had sent, I had emailed you a, a slightly updated one. I don't know if you saw that or not, but if, if not, that's fine. There was only one little thing which I can point out.
Yes, I, I opened up the one you just sent me via email.
Oh, great, great. Thank you so much. So.
I want to start just by setting the time expectations. We're, we're looking at like thirty minutes for the whole thing, maybe fifteen to twenty minutes for the presentation. And that'll leave the trustees ten minutes to ask questions.
Absolutely. We'll be, we'll be right in that timeframe. No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. I'll, if you could go to the, the first slide there, Evelyn, thank you. So just a quick little bit about our firm and a little bit about me. And then I'll have a couple of our team members introduce themselves who are here this evening. So I've been in education for my entire career, twenty five years, was a teacher principal superintendent on the East Coast. I was an adjunct at Teachers College Columbia University for about twelve years where I did my graduate work and started Zeal three years ago. And our approach is, is a little bit different than the, the Leadership Associates who just presented. We don't just do superintendent searches. In fact, our goal is to be the, the firm that can do and help in any type of need that a school or district has. We have over a hundred consultants with a wide, wide variety of, of specializations and interests and passions. And so we, we like to think of ourselves almost like comparable to the Mayo Clinic. A, a patient comes in and doesn't exactly know what he or she needs, but, or may know, but we bring the specialist to, to them. And so for every audit, doing one in Minnesota right now, we're doing another one in Connecticut right now. We do leadership coaching. We do professional development, financial audits. We do, we do just about everything. I'd like, if you could click to the next slide, I'd love to just have my colleagues do a quick introduction of themselves. David, I believe you can go first.
Good evening, Governing Board. My name is Dr. David Miascher. I'm currently the superintendent in the Cajon Valley Union School District and have been in California schools for twenty five years, five different districts, and have been working with Zeal for the last couple. And I'm really excited to share this process, some of the innovations in search. And the fact that my sister, Sandra Jo Galvin, and I are on the committee, I think, strengthens with two sitting, very successful California superintendents. Thank you.
Sandra, do you want to introduce yourself there?
Absolutely. Thank you. It's, it's an honor and a privilege to be in front of you today to share a little bit about our expertise as a team. I've been a educator in California for over thirty years. Been a seated superintendent entering my ninth year in all levels of school districts from preschool all the way to twelfth grade. And I bring to you expertise from the state of California, working very close to the Bay Area in the Salinas Union High School District in the Monterey County area. So very familiar with the Bay Area and of course, California. Honored to be here.
The other person on this search, if we were to be awarded this opportunity, is Dr. Ian Saltzman. I'm sure you were able to read his bio. He's the superintendent in Everett, Washington. And just incredibly well connected, all three of the people that would be on the search and I, I would also be a part of this team and very active in the process. But they are all current sitting superintendents with recent knowledge of all of the opportunities and challenges that are being experienced in the field of education and in, you know, across the country. If we can go to the next slide, please. So you've just sat through a few presentations. I was able to listen to the Leadership Associates on the call. So I won't go through, you know, all the, all those details. What, what you will see though, obviously, is there's a lot of overlaps. Most national search firms are going to have teams of experienced superintendents. The differentiator being in our case that our, our superintendents are not retired superintendents. They're, they're active superintendents. So they have maybe a little bit more experience with the currency of, you know, what is happening. All firms are going to talk about how they engage stakeholders. We, we think that is essential to this. And we go, in my belief, a little bit, a little bit further in some ways to do that. Any search firm that is good is going to, you know, do leverage their extensive national network. I have almost, almost a ten thousand followers on LinkedIn, which has been, which has been, you know, exciting to, to almost get there. And like I said, we have a hundred, over a hundred consultants from around the country. And so we have an extensive network as well. And all firms are going to describe and, and the, I'm sure my, the other firms also described how they're going to, you know, screen applicants and narrow the field and recommend strong candidates to the board for interviews. If you can go to the next slide. So a couple of things that I think differentiate Zeal in, in this. And so you can see these here. I'm going to walk through pretty quickly. So if you can go to the, the next slide. The first one is concierge level service. And, and what I think about, when I think about the word concierge, it's anticipating needs. So what we do is we really, and I'm sure you've heard this from other firms, you know, have a planning meeting. We, we actually delineate very, very clearly what roles and responsibilities Zeal has, what roles and responsibilities the board has, and what roles and responsibilities we have together. So that's our chronological search timeline. You can see that there and it's more detail in your proposal. That's important because it really clarifies expectations. And we want to, and we think about this concierge level service as eliminating anything that would take away your ability to focus on choosing the right leader. So we try to handle all the things from, you know, having professionally designed invitations to members of your community to let them know that the board wants to hear their input, providing every, providing every week a progress report that can be, you know, transmitted easily to your community to give updates on your website or through your email or other social channels. And in terms of concierge, we, we go way above and beyond, I think. We support with, you know, if you'd like, to the extent that the board wishes, negotiations with a successful candidate. We help with the development of an entry plan, which is a very important piece. We help with onboarding of the superintendent. And, and I'll get into a few other details and things that we've included in this proposal. We really pay attention to detail. You can go to the next slide. Proactive stakeholder engagement. So I know you've heard, and actually I was really impressed with Leadership Associates. I heard them talk about, you know, going to where the people are. And we did a search in Rock Hill, South Carolina. We, we take that very seriously as well. We, we had a community of Native Americans on a reservation. We went and sent our team to the, to the reservation to, to listen, to hear, to really proactively engage people in the community. A lot of firms will say, we sent out a survey. We go way, way, way beyond that. You can see the engagement calendar. That's a sample. The yellow are the virtual meetings, the blue are the in person meetings. We do virtual, we do in person, we do town hall meetings, meetings with individual board members, meeting with every conceivable group that you think is important for us to hear. And what this does is it really makes sure that the stakeholders in your community know that their voices matter and have an impact and influence on the, on the superintendent, the leadership profile that we develop. I will talk, there's another piece. I'll go to the next slide and we'll talk a little bit more about that. So when we talk about surveys, you know, I did, I, I, I'm very familiar with HYA. And, and I know that Leadership Associates also does a, a multilingual survey. They, they mentioned, we don't charge extra either for that, of course. We don't charge extra for, for anything. Everything in the proposal is pretty clear. If you have your phone and you wish, and you could see that little QR code, it'll give you a, a chance to actually experience what Thought Exchange is. If you're not familiar with Thought Exchange, it's been around for probably two decades. It's a, it's a very, very exciting way of engaging people in, in expressing their views. So whereas most surveys are, are developed to force you into choosing from several options, a Thought Exchange will ask the question, you know, we could develop it however we want. It could, but typically they say, what's your priority for the next superintendent of schools? And what that does is it allows, and, and you can, the person taking, participating can experience this in, in over a hundred languages on their cell phone. And then when people start writing their thoughts and, and adding those, they get to star those thoughts in real time. It all gets translated. Languages are translated. It's pretty phenomenal. And, and then the, the thoughts that have the greatest merit by the highest star rating get moved up. And, and then, so we use this data to inform really, you know, what the people that are participating think. So in terms of engagement, we, we go to where people are. We, we do it virtually, we do it in person. And we also use Thought Exchange to develop that leadership profile and to really engage folks. If you want to go to the next slide. Another thing that we, we think differentiates us is we've come up with these six personas. Now, I would love to tell you that, you know, the superintendent we find who is going to be perfect and can do everything, but that's just not, that's not the case. Different superintendents, different leaders have different skills and dispositions and proclivities. And so depending on the needs of your community at this time, which may, you know, be different than when you hired your previous superintendent, we use this as an additional lens to help the board think through and evaluate candidates. So is, is instruction a concern right now? Maybe you need an instructional leader. Is, are there crises that are going on in your community? Maybe you need a crisis manager. Maybe you need somebody to build community. So now every superintendent and every, you know, leader can adapt. So I'm not suggesting that, that, that there are these, these personality types and archetypes that, that are very fixed. But it, part of our process of, of evaluating candidates is we ask them, and by the way, this is, I think, pretty cool. We, we ask each candidate when they are the ones we're recommending for the slate, which is about ten, to record themselves for ninety seconds in a little video, answering the question, what persona they, they believe they bring as their greatest strength and why they want to be, why they're a fit for, for, for your community, for Rockwood. So, I'm sorry, Redwood. So, so it's a very personalized thing. So you get to not just read resumes, but we, we curate a package for you. And we show these ninety second videos and you get to really meet the candidates before you make decisions on who to interview. Next slide. The last thing is, and you know, I know there are questions and there's always a question about a guarantee. I don't like to think about, I would disagree with the, with, respectfully disagree with Leadership Associates about, you know, a particular timeline and saying you have to stay five years. I mean, we want to find a fit. And we want, and we met, we would measure, and we're a new firm, so it's, I don't have a lot of data to, to provide you in this. But we try to mitigate the, the sort of problem of it not being a fit by ensuring that we're doing everything to support the candidate and creating a high performing governance team. We, we do that by facilitating a board retreat, which we've included in this proposal. And we do that by providing executive coaching with the, with the new superintendent to make sure that these relationships and the foundation of trust is developed and, and ensure their success. So those are some of the things I think we do differently. And I would love to entertain some questions and would welcome my colleagues to join, join in and, and, and jump in where they can.
All right. Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. I will turn to Jen to start with our questions.
Thank you for the presentation. I just have one clarification question. Sounds like we have a pretty short timeline from what I've been seeing on the process. And it sounds like your team is all active superintendents. Kind of what is the, how, how does that work?
Well, I think I, I could let them answer. What superintendents are really good at is getting the job done. And, and they are in a place in their careers where this is something that they are passionate about doing and want to do it. And, and we have, I mean, I'm, I'm part of the team too. I'm part of the support and I think we have three people on the team plus me. I don't think that there would be any, any issue with that. But I'll let my colleagues respond to that because they're actively working.
Yeah, I'm sure that, that my other two colleagues both have in their contracts, the provision to consult. And we take vacation days when we do that. We're very excited to, to help Redwood City in this search. Working with Zeal and seeing the process that Jeff has put together and providing coaching for new superintendents really got me excited about this. And locally in Poway Unified School District in San Diego County, the recent search that they just went through, they had active superintendents from San Diego as part of the search process. And I could tell you from just conversations with my colleagues, having people that are vetting candidates, having conversations with your cabinet and your governance team about the current political issues, the financial issues, the federal and state conversations that are happening are really important to make sure that you have someone that is going to be able to handle the difficult, difficult conversations that are coming to you probably right now. And especially with Dr. Baker, who has been so successful, a Region Five Superintendent of the Year, and the longevity is provided, really understanding the vision of the school district and the history of the school district is important. And I think Xander and I, in our current role, And I think Xander and I, in our current roles, can do that quite well. Sis?
Absolutely. I concur with all of what he shared. And I'll also share with you our locality, right? So I'm not very far from you and being able to be able to meet with our families. And oftentimes it's not during the workday, right? We're going to have to have evening meetings, sometimes it's going to be Saturdays or Sundays. And those are all days that we work around. In addition to that, like my brother here, we call each other brother soup, sister soup, because we take care of each other in this, this crazy world, right? But we also have provisions in our contracts to be able to have additional days that if it's needed during a workday, that's something that we absolutely could work around because we have all those days that are available. The other thing I will tell you is the availability to speak in the language of the majority of your population. I did notice you have a lot of Spanish speaking community. So to have meetings in Spanish is going to be very important to you. And as we know with hardworking families, it's the evenings is when they're going to need our availability. So yo puedo hablar la idioma, puedo comunicar la comunidad. And, and in a way that they feel seen, valued and heard. And so I think that's a level that we would bring to your, to your district and treat the next candidate exactly as what I would want for my children and what we would want for our children as well. I know it's a really big decision that you have to make when you're looking at your next top official. And it's not something that you can take lightly. And so our availability to meet your needs is going to be of critical importance. And so we would make ourselves available.
Next question, Cecilia, do you want to, do you have another question for zeal?
How long have you guys been a organization?
Three years.
Thank you.
All right, David Weekly.
How many Bay Area superintendents have you placed?
Zero.
How many California superintendents have you placed?
Zero. Those are great questions. I, if that is the, the primary criteria or concern, I certainly don't think we'd be the right firm for you. But what I will tell you is, we did a search in Rock Hill, South Carolina. We're not from South Carolina. The team that I had on that project, I had a, I had somebody from North Carolina, somebody from Texas, and somebody from Ohio. And we recruited 25 qualified applicants across 17 states. So if, if that's the metric that is of biggest concern, we don't have the experience yet, we're a new firm. But I have absolutely no doubt and confidence in my colleagues that we understand what is central and foundational to the success of a superintendent search. And that is, we can work with boards, we can work with communities, and we have a network and we understand the job. And we understand how to put it all together and bring you candidates that to select from.
Jeff, can I speak to that too?
Yeah.
Yes, I think HYA and Leadership Associates talked about partner organizations like AXA and CSBA. Xander and I are, are members. So we are part of CSBA, we are part of the Association California School Administrators. Xander, I think you should share about CALSA and the work you've done for the statewide organization. But we're also part of a national network. So as opposed to just posting advertisements in edcal and edjoin, we're going to go out and recruit because we're in the weeds and in the trenches with the best people in the business all over the country and certainly well connected in our state.
Absolutely. And I'll echo that. We currently mentor across this great nation and through several organizations. David and I are both advisors to future ready schools, which is based out of DC and are looking for a large pool of seated superintendents or aspiring superintendents. I also mentor for AASA, which is the mothership for AXA. So the local California organization has cohorts, academies of aspiring superintendents. And I currently mentor for not only the Latino Latina Academy of Aspiring Superintendents. I also mentor for female aspiring superintendents. Each one of the cohorts have anywhere from 30 to 75 members. And I most recently joined faculty to mentor the aspiring superintendent academy. So not necessarily female, not necessarily of ethnicity, but a larger pool of all types of candidates. We meet regularly. I meet with three candidates who I've been assigned to. And I mentor with them virtually and then we meet in person at the national conference, which happens February, March during that time. And so we're quite a bit of our imprint is throughout the nation. And so David is very approachable and very approachable. And so people often will message us and ask for advice on what they're trying to do in the, in a particular, you know, event or situation that they're experiencing, both in the C-suite level and in the superintendent level. So our reach is pretty far and we're very active in, in those networks to help support those that we serve.
Thank you. I noticed the presentation put a fair bit of stock in the Thought Exchange platform, which seems like a neat platform. But many of our community members are likely to need on the ground outreach in person and in Spanish and not just AI powered engagement surveys. So I'm curious what your plan might be for that.
That's a great question. Maybe we could go back to that slide where, let's see, Evelyn, it should be number two, proactive stakeholder engagement. So if you can pull that slide up, you'll see that there's a calendar that we put together. And what we do is we recommend, so it's, it's, yeah, it's down one more, yeah, right there, perfect. So we recommend that the, that the board and, you know, working with your tech department or whomever is in control of the website or other channels for communication. We publish a engagement calendar, which, which identifies, and in this case, it was a full week of opportunities for both in-person, so those are the blue ones, virtual, and, and then the Thought Exchange, the surveys separate on top of that. So we will, we will do that. We will be on the boots on the ground in person, day or night. We also recommend duplicating the opportunities. So we don't just give a, a, an in-person meeting for principals. We do an in-person meeting for principals and a virtual meeting for principals. And what we do is we work with your leadership so that we don't, we don't, you know, set it at a time, set a meeting with your power professionals when it's, it would cause a contractual interference or a familial interference with them having to go and take care of their families. So we, we generate this calendar with the input of your leadership to make sure that we maximize the opportunities and we publish it and we say, and then we send individual invitations, you know, personalized invitations to, to these stakeholder groups to make sure that they're invited. In one of the other searches in Rock Hill, we, they wanted to meet with the NAACP. We sent a personalized invitation. We met at a specific location to meet with them. So yeah, absolutely. Great question. And I'm glad I got to point out that we do virtual, in-person and thought exchange.
Thank you. David Lee? No questions? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think this covered, anybody else more questions? Go ahead, yeah.
I just noticed in the presentation, there was a mention of, we don't charge extra for anything. But then I did see in the proposal that background checks were extra and that AASA and targeted email sending were also extra. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, those are third party charges. So any, any third party, so publishing a, and getting a top spot on AASA's website is a third party charge. And then doing a, doing a criminal background, social media, DUI, you know, state, all of that background, background check is, is additional because it's, it's engaged by a third party that we, we can't handle for you. It's also optional. So, you know, that's, that's your call if you want to do that. I recommend, at least for the, for this final candidate, that you do that third party background check. But some, some districts have their own internal processes for that. So we leave that up to your discretion.
Great. And I think, I mean, for me, your presentation pretty much covered everything. I already got the answer to, you do hold community outreach in Spanish, not just through translation. So that was good to hear. If there are no other questions, then I can say thank you to Doctors Melinda's, Mia Shiro and Galvin for your presentation for zeal. And I think we can move into board discussion.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we do too. Thank you.
Okay, have a great night.
Okay, so I want to again, thank all the firms for the presentations. And I thought maybe to get us started, we could just go around real fast and just take, take each, name one strength or positive impression you had from any one of the firms. Not all of them, just pick one strength that you wanted to do and like, let's just sort of start the conversation out with that. Can I start with you, trustee weekly?
Sure. I have to say, I really did love seeing Eric's passion and just the comparability of Campbell as a district. And this is a leadership associates. So that was impressive.
Cecilia, would you like to name one strength of one, one of the firms?
Same for leadership and associates. As I mentioned before, I appreciated the fact that they did their homework and not just presented, but also saw our meetings prior, knows that we are here to serve our students. So I really appreciate that.
Mine's for leadership associate also, but thinking about what I, I need as a board member to get through this process. I liked that they were detailed in the guiding of what are the steps, what are kind of the process.
I will say, I do appreciate all of the presentations and the firms. It's very clear that very smart people are working on all these things. And I would, I think we would probably be in good hands with any of them. But I will also add with leadership associates that I think one, one strength that stood out to me was the degree to which it's clearly customized to the specific comments that we've made, both in past board meetings as well as today. So that gave me confidence of any handholding we'll need.
Yeah, I think I started this out saying, we're going to see three firms, all are qualified, all are very strong and put it there. So I think we put that together. I'm going to jump to straw poll. I think I know where it's going. But I wanted to just do this, it's not a final vote. I just wanted to do this to get a sense of where everyone's leaning so that if we're going to have a discussion afterwards. So I'll just ask you to share which firm you'd be most comfortable moving forward with if we had to decide tonight, which I'm hoping we do. This isn't locking anyone in yet, it's not a vote, you know, we're just trying to see where it is. So maybe we'll go around backwards. David Lee?
I would go with leadership associates.
All right, Jen?
I would go with leadership associates.
Cecilia?
Same here.
Oh, I'd like to be the contrarian, but I'll go with, I'd say leadership associates as well.
I'm going to say it's looking like leadership associates probably has the most support. So unless anyone feels strongly otherwise, I suggest we just move to a formal motion to approve. Do we remember like what the language was from the memo for someone to be able to make the formal motion? Okay, can someone make the motion then?
I move that the Board of Trustees approve leadership associates as the superintendent search firm to assist in the recruitment and hiring of the next superintendent of the Redwood City School District.
Okay, and is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. I want, I really want to thank all our three, our three firms that came and presented tonight, this evening. I mean, it is just, first of all, these 90 minutes were super educational for me, just about the whole process. Because as, as you pointed out from the very beginning, none of us have gone through this before. And so every minute that you spent here was, was super valuable and I really appreciate it. And Evelyn, you too. Thank you for coordinating, as always. Okay. Good night. Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to eight point two.
Just one quick remark I wanted to throw on. So thank, thank you for helping put that together. And I also just wanted to say that we did try, and I want to congratulate Evelyn and Dr. Baker for doing pretty extensive outreach. So we actually went to many more than just
Eight firms.
Three firms. I couldn't believe how few reached back out. I actually personally went and reached out to a bunch more to try and fill top of funnel. But you know, these were the three that were the most responsive. So thanks so much for your work on the process.
Yeah, outstanding firms. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to eight point two, which is adoption of resolution number eight. And this is approval of education code options for teaching assignments. We know this.
Yes. Any questions or comments?
Does anyone have questions or comments? No, okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move we approve eight point two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, perfect. Eight point three is the second reading and eight point three is the second reading and approval of BP 3320, which is claims and actions against the district and adoption of resolution number nine.
Yes, thank you for that. I did want to point out on the board memo, there are two versions, but the one noted one has the most recent very small edits that we needed to make. So those upon approval would be the two that would be uploaded, the resolution, of course, and then the board policy 3320.
Are there questions about the resolution, the memo, everything's been, if anyone had questions beforehand, they've been addressed? Feels good. Okay. Then is there a motion to approve? A second?
Second.
All in favor? Perfect. Okay, then remember nine point one, we moved to later. So we'll move on to our consent agenda. We're going to approve all of the items under section 10 in one motion and then vote. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Then just by order of the agenda, we're going to move on to this board and superintendent reports. Who would like to start? Yeah, go for it.
Went to the TAFT ELEC slash principal coffee, which was great. There were about a dozen parents, which is great to see just the engagement in general. Particularly in a Bayside school, but also just the report that was clear from the principal, David and the families there. A lot of topics were covered that we've gone through before, cell phone, absenteeism, and lots of opportunities for volunteers to keep folks engaged. And yeah, I thought it was super helpful just to see that happening, soliciting folks to join DLEC and solve problems there to the extent there are any, just again, making sure that's the representation. And then RCF was also present and presented a check. Very helpful to have our, as we know, funds are necessary. So whenever we can get them, that was great. And then separately, I joined the superintendent's advisory council meeting earlier. Again, very helpful. For, for those who do not know, it's a way to disseminate information to all the different representatives at the different school sites. This was the English version. But great to get some questions and engagement specifically on the parcel tax effort that we've obviously been a part of. Lots of good questions and it sounds like people are thinking about a lot of the uncertainty. I think we all share some, some concerns of just about where we are. And, but I think it sounded like folks are trying to solve the problem together. So that was great. And then Dr. Baker did a great job of also just getting input for all the other open positions for bond oversight, all the other, meaning DLEC, budget committee, et cetera. So that was a good meeting.
Great, thank you. Jen, do you have anything to report? Whoops, coffee?
We had policy meeting this week, but other than that.
Okay, great. Cecilia?
I was also present on Monday for the superintendent advisory committee, so.
Nice, okay, good.
I'm bereft of things to reply.
Yeah, me too. It's okay. Dr. Baker, anything to report?
It's already been mentioned, the superintendent's advisory.
Great, let's move on to the information section. Three letters from the CBO's office for the three charter schools. Anyone have questions about the information? Rick, anything to add on top of what's there? I think it's your item, right?
Yeah.
I'll just mention on the letter to KIP, there was some requests for corrections and they have made those.
Okay. Yeah. All right, that's it for information. Then we are up to nine point one again. And so we're going to do the, this is nine point one, the school board self-evaluation, discussion of results. So this is our first time we've done this, at least when I've been on the board, a self-evaluation. So I think it's new to all of us. I've been here for five years. You know, if we find it useful, I hope that we'll continue to make it part of our governing practices. According to the survey, it's supposed to be. So maybe, maybe we can start that. I do want to say that, you know, this, this reuse the CSBA self-evaluation. And just as a reminder, it's designed to assess how the governance team operates, like the roles, the norms, meeting craft, clarity with the superintendent, board's core responsibilities. It doesn't really judge the wisdom or the impact of specific policies, right? So we're going to be talking more about like how we work and not necessarily whether, whether the right thing's being done necessarily. But hopefully that if we establish great practices, you know, that should make it so that our processes Um, but hopefully that if we establish great practices, you know, that should make it so that our processes will drive better outcomes for every student, um, you know, and keep equity at the center. Um, and then also the other thing that I, I noted there was that CSBA emphasizes that this is perception data. It's not really facts, um, but it's supposed to spur our learning. Um, so we, we'll use the self-perception to confirm our strengths, identify growth areas, um, and you know, focus areas, and then we'll set some goals. And then I guess the last thing I wanted to say is that we have, um, uh, as you can see from the results, we uh, perceive our culture is really good. So I'm, but I'm still going to set some sort of norms through this conversation. Um, we want to listen, understand and assume positive intent. Um, we're going to speak to the board performance and systems, not to individuals. Uh, we're going to stay at the governance level and not dive into operational rabbit holes. And then we're going to use evidence and examples and we will uh, disagree agreeably. Um, I have a presentation, um, that can walk us through some of these things that I will uh, attempt to see if I can share it if I'm allowed. Yeah. Yeah, okay, there we go. I'm uh, uh, so we'll review the self-evaluation. I have a little five-minute warm-up exercise for us, then we'll go into the different areas. I took an attempt to try and like pull them out and put them into focus areas for us to sort of guide this conversation. And then I think at the end of this, we're going to set three goals um, out of this. Uh, we'll do a little wording exercise um, and go through that. Okay. Um, so the one thing I wanted to do is just round robin, uh, one board strength you're proud of and one surprise you want to understand. David Weekly?
Strength is just, I feel like we work really well together as a board and it's something that brings me joy.
Cecilia?
That's actually my most favorite part of Redwood City. Um, we are a cohesive team. And so I appreciate the fact that again, we could maybe agree to disagree at times, but respect each other. So I really appreciate that.
Wait, I forgot, um, something you were surprised of, something that surprised you.
Didn't realize until the packet came out that we really don't have much formal process for onboarding new trustees. And it was like, oh yeah, we probably should have.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah. Uh, Cecilia, your surprise?
That was not a surprise, because I, I felt it when I came in, but again, just because I work for another school district, um. I think I am going to skip the answer.
Okay.
I don't know that I've been surprised.
Jen?
I agree with both, um, David and Cecilia on the strength. Um, and then the surprise, I guess for me was I was surprised at the onboarding process, but seeing that it kind of
Yeah.
That's not my own perspective was maybe the surprise.
Got it. Uh, David Lee?
Um, I'll, I'll try something different. Uh, one of the strengths that I saw that was echoed during one of the presentations was also that I think we are all um, agreeing that we are student focused, um, which is great. Uh, and then one of the surprises, I think on the flip side is despite that, um, there's also some unanimity among the degree to which we're um, sending clear goals on what that looks like, or like having a system in place. Um, so I want to understand like how we can move that forward.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and for me, uh, the strength is similar, like it's just, uh, it's obvious the sections that are all really green. So that was, uh, I was proud of that. Um, and then the surprise was, yeah, I was really surprised that nobody knew officer selection. It's kind of like right in the bylaws of like, how did, how to put that in? That one really, I mean, to me, I thought that bylaw was like way over prescriptive. So I was kind of surprised that the rotation wasn't known. Um, okay, go ahead. Yeah.
Uh, I think the wording was whether or not everyone agreed to this, the mechanism by which officers are decided.
Ah.
So that might've been some of the unknown.
Okay, okay. Yeah, maybe I misinterpreted it. That's why it surprised me then. Um, okay, so I went in and sort of looked at some strengths. Um, and I just wanted to pull them out. You can agree or disagree. We can use this as a framework here, but um, you know, it just kind of goes to what we just talked about. Um, it looks like we're doing pretty well in mutual respect and confidentiality. Um, those kind of came up as, you know, pretty solidly green. And as a reminder, green is top two box, um, score. I can't remember what they are on the top, but the top is the left and the um, no ideas on the right. Um, so I got, th- these were the items that fit into it, but I think there's a good culture of mutual respect and confidentiality. Um, preparedness and uh, meeting leadership, thank you. Um, but I know I still have the, uh, other board presidents that were there. Um, but everybody comes in prepared, um, and it seems like we're doing okay on that front. Um, then there's unity and focus on achievement. I think you called that out, David Lee. So uh, I think that that's, that's great that we all perceive that we're doing this. We're, we're working well together. Um, we're, you know, not undermining our decisions and we're focused on achievement for all students. Um, so what I want to ask is like, what behaviors and patterns are creating these wins? In other words, like what do we need to keep doing to make sure that uh, you know, we continue these strengths? Um, I'm going to go backwards. Uh, David Lee, you can start.
I, I think for us, and I think you mentioned this before, really having these formalized conversations and putting them on the calendar of the board self-evaluations and reflections. This year for sure, like this is great. And to continue doing that, I think is going to really help force us to continue to be mindful of like how we can improve on all the things we're doing, uh, and maintaining all the strengths that we're doing as well.
Jen?
Yeah, I agree. I think um, the last session we had where we were able to focus on a couple of topics and also get to know each other, um, really kind of will keep this section green very easily.
Cecilia?
I appreciate the retreats. And so, um, and I know we've mentioned it, um, I know it's hard with people's times, but I think that brings us together. And then we could talk about certain um, topics that could benefit the district. So.
David Weekly?
Yeah, I feel like a lot of what board meetings constitute in terms of just a regular day-to-day board meeting is like tactics and tactically executing. Uh, but I think it's important that we intermix that with strategic discussions. So things that are important, but not urgent. And therefore, uh, have a tendency to just get kind of pushed out. And so things like retreats offer a time for us to talk about some of those things and get those things calendared. And I'm looking forward to having us lean more into that.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then I think that behavior, I think the preparedness actually is the thing that kind of adds to all of this. It's really easy to be respectful when you've like understood and like taken the time to look at both sides or whatever it is around the issues. So I think that's definitely a um, behavior and pattern that we should continue to, you know, to keep creating these wins. Um, okay, so now let's talk about what we really want to do here, which is where are the areas that we can start improving? So I highlighted a few growth areas. Um, like six. So uh, but you know, if you have others, by all means, suggest them. Um, clearly we don't perceive we have a good uh, governance clarity with the superintendent. Um, you know, that we're, you know, this is around giving direction only at board meetings and making sure that not individuals aren't trying to direct the superintendent. Uh, word development, onboarding cadence. Um, we just talked a little bit about the retreats, um, and being able to do that, but uh, obviously onboarding has room for improvement. Uh, setting direction and indicators. Um, this was around like, you know, yeah, you can see it here, adopting the long range priorities, um, pulling in community input. Um, this one, I think we could try, if we wanted to spend some time unpacking it, we, we could a little bit there because there is, if you think of like the direction set through the LCAP, there is an extensive stakeholder um, engagement thing there. So it might be something to think about on that one, like what, what do we think is missing? Um, the, and then around the district admission tied to like where the outcomes are. Um, so that, this one I call it setting direction and indicators. Um, I said there's like this policy and accountability follow-through that there's sort of perception. Um, there's a, you know, you can see the, the items that sort of fit in here where it looks like, uh, we don't, we don't think that we're doing so well on these things. Um, community leadership and communications, like this is just the whole section. Uh, I just, you know, I just took it. We, we feel like we're not doing a great job um, as a board of being leaders in the community. Uh, and so what I wanted to ask, if we go back through there, and I'm happy to um, go back to any of the slides, if you want to submit the questions. Actually, I sent it to everyone, right? So you, you have it. If we think of those areas as like places where we could say, hey, this is one of the ones that we want to work on. Um, and we want to put some sort of action in there, which one of them, you know, if we improved it, would be the most beneficial for students and the district this year? Um, I'm going this way this time. David Weekly?
Yeah, I think framed that way, the answer is clear to me that setting direction and indicators is the most impactful thing that we could do. Just to align the whole district around, like why are we here and how will we know if we're successful?
Okay. Cecilia?
That would probably be an important one, but I also feel, obviously we're here now, but onboarding could probably be the first step to actually do better as a board. So perhaps the board development and onboarding, um, would be one.
Jen?
Um, I agree with trustee weekly, but I also would think that the policy and accountability follow-through kind of work hand-in-hand with those. I think at least what I've seen more recently, bringing up and reviewing the policies has kind of also driven conversation about setting directions and kind of where the board puts in things in importance.
Okay. Uh, David Lee?
Uh, yeah, I think I'll, I'll echo what um, trustee weekly and, and King said. Um, and I think maybe very tangibly in my head, I think it would be really, really helpful in terms, I'm looking at number thirty-nine in terms of the measurable indicators to assess the district performance. I, I think part of that is having a very clear board-developed calendar of expectations of like, what are we monitoring? And when are we monitoring that? Because I think everything else flows from that as well. Like then we can have a cohesive community message. Then we can also orient board members to what we think is important. Uh, but I, like, again, we do all the things, but I think that's, that's the fundamental starting point.
All right, then just to keep splitting it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that I think that actually governance clarity with the superintendent, because focus on the right things is more important than like scattering across all of the other ones. And so that might be something that would be different, but don't worry. We're going to get a chance to vote on these to decide which ones we want to go after. So I'm kind of glad to see that there was a split vote here. Um, and uh, table your ideas for how to improve it, because um, we'll look for like what a good action item could be coming up after this. Um, was there an area that we thought was that, did anybody have anything that struck them as like, hey, there was this like clear growth area that didn't get covered in these?
Um, for me, that last section, but it was probably more about being new and not knowing what were the community events, what's kind of the typical presence of board members.
Right. Okay, so yeah, the onboarding, kind of back onto the onboarding, like here's where you're supposed to be.
We weren't doing a good job. It was more just uncertainty of kind of what was available out there.
Okay, okay.
I mean, there was kind of one that wasn't really in here. That's been a persistent bugbear of mine, which is just making sure that we set aside time regularly to go and have the important strategic dialogue, because that's ultimately what the board meeting needs to be about. Is us as trustees convening to engage in earnest dialogue about where the district needs to go to best serve its students.
All right, I will, I will keep that as a, as something to stick on the board. Move on. There are a bunch of that were unclear. Um, unclear items are the ones that were split votes. You know, it was sort of like, it wasn't clearly red, not clearly green, um, so somewhere in the middle, probably opportunities here. Um, so I think this might be kind of where you were going about bringing up new ideas a little bit. Um, but there's some, there's some sense around processes, like maybe we need to um, work on some of our processes. Again, we might end up pairing that with like onboarding, you know, that kind of thing of like, how do we, how do we do these things? The uh, um, this is kind of like the meeting craft, like how we do our meetings. Um, you know, do we, are we reflecting the right priorities, using right data? Do we have the right time on the right items? Um, that kind of thing. Uh, and then there was visibility, which kind of goes back to the community events. This stuff was kind of split. Um, are we seeing it at um, key district events and are we celebrating district accomplishments? Um, and so Jen, you kind of touched on this one a little bit earlier, but like, if we look at these three areas, um, you know, I guess one of the questions I had was like, are they, are they process gaps or just undocumented expectations? Um, when we think about like the processes for bringing things up, the meeting craft and visibility. David Weekly, I saw you reaching, so go ahead.
I, I was literally just adjusting my microphone, but also I have something to share, which is that uh, any time I've been part of uh, an organization or a meeting sequence that has gotten really good, it's because we've made a discipline of making it better each time. And so if we had, uh, I'm, I'm just making this up on the fly, but if after every board meeting, we were to send, uh, we have some place to say at a meta level, how could that meeting have gone better?
Okay.
Right? How could we have had an even better meeting? Then that'll make sure that the next meeting will be better.
Okay.
Right?
So are you suggesting that as like, that could be like a, a goal that we add in to improve our processes? If we decided processes was an important thing we wanted to go after?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Just, there's some way to provide feedback
Yeah.
On like, how might we imagine future meetings to go better?
Yeah.
After every meeting.
Yeah, makes sense. Um, Cecilia, thoughts about, um, are some of our split areas?
So the meeting craft, um, I think to me, just with the time being here, um, there has been times when the right time on the right items feels a little like we kind of moved fast, even though we do try to make the best decision. Um, and then there's times when I feel we spend a lot of time on something that could probably, could have been shorter. I mean, um, when, when we talk about process and procedures maybe, I mean, one of the things, I know it has nothing to do with like board, but when like somebody's presenting to the board, um, if we say it's fifteen minutes, it goes thirty minutes. So now it's forty-five minutes. But if we try to bring everybody together and everybody be on the same page, then I feel that um, it would leave us that extra time to then have the time to discuss those important items.
Great, and I'll, uh, I'll call out Evelyn adding the time to all our agenda items has been outstanding. So uh, yeah, and the clock is great. Um, okay, Jen?
I personally think if we did this board evaluation at a regular cadence or did the post-mortem post-meeting, a lot of these unclear items would be clearer. It's just for me, I think part of it is my responses are from being new versus.
So a little bit of undocumented expectations is kind of what you're saying here. Yeah, okay. I, I agree, yeah.
I think I'm probably in the same boat. Uh, well, I, I think I'm specifically thinking of the visibility pieces maybe something that's a little bit different, where I think there may be both a process gap and an undocumented expectation concern where I'm kind of just trying to go as many things as I can. And like, that can't be the right answer.
Yeah.
But we should have that discussion of how we're, how we're thinking about it and documented.
Yeah, and by that you mean you're saying like, beyond like, um, uh, the graduations, retirement ceremonies, induction ceremony, like all the ones that we're already going to, are there more out there? And that's the part that like, you're, you're saying, I don't know what's out there. Okay, yeah, got it. Um, yeah, and I, I look at these, I think, you know, I think you know, meeting craft is probably a place where it probably is a process gap. Um, you know, and being able to really focus on those, not, not just an undocumented expectation. I think that that one, there's probably things that we could continue to do better. And so maybe, maybe we'll find out what the action item is from there.
I feel like on meeting craft, there's one that's related to the superintendent direction one, is that I feel like if it was easier and almost more casual to go and put a small item on, on the agenda for upcoming meetings and that board members were expected or encouraged, if like, you see something in the district and you, you'd like to discuss it with trustees and you'd like to give some direction to the superintendent, that it becomes a regular thing uh, to go and like check in before the agenda gets finalized, like, hey, did, does anything come up that you want to make sure that we discuss at the next meeting?
I hear us problem solving. So I think we should move to, um, no, I think it's great. I think we should move to like, let's, let's, we're not gonna, we're not gonna fix everything all at once. Let's pick three. Um, and I think three is a reasonable number. And then, yeah, then we can start saying like, what do we think that the action should be from there? So I conveniently written them down on a sticky note, so I'm going to stick onto the wall. And Evelyn has kindly brought stickers for everyone. You get four votes. And we're just going to pick the top three. And then we'll come back and say, what do we want those actions to be so that we can improve our meeting processes? Sound good?
I added in, um, I added in David Weekly, your additional one of, uh, okay, sorry, stupidly wrote it sideways. Just gonna make it a little bit more difficult. Just gonna make it a little bit more difficult. Oh, thank you. You're so kind. I was worried that you would be able to read it.
You're no doctor. I'll leave my mic on, so.
Yeah.
For people can hear what we're saying. If AV could maybe switch off the presentation and zoom the.
Oh, I'll stop.
Okay.
Yeah. Stop sharing.
But folks online may need the power zoom to actually see what's on the wall.
Um, that's okay. I'm gonna read out. I'll, there'll be a readout, so they don't have to, if people can't see it, uh, we'll read out. Okay, so Jen, just take your stickers and go vote for the four, or there's no rules. You can put all your stickers onto one thing if you want.
No rules.
You have, uh,
Four virtual credits. Minor all of the credits. All right, since we're done, so.
That is three, that is three. Okay, so I'm gonna see if I can combine these.
Yeah, we have a tie, but I think we can combine these. I'm losing a little disenfranchised.
And so, oh, yeah, well, okay. Okay, um, so I don't think we're gonna sit down and solve it all at once. So what I wanted to do is say like, is there something we can set as like a goal and like a time that we'll come back and, you know, and say like, hey, we've got to this part. Um, so it doesn't have to be like, uh, we need to know exactly what the solution is. The goal might be, we're gonna go back and, you know, um, reevaluate what our plan is and like come up with a new proposal for how we want to be able to do that. Um, so the one with the, the, the highest votes was setting direction and indicators. I'm gonna go back and remind myself what we were actually talking about as the metrics for that one. Setting directions indicators. So as a reminder, um, this was providing opportunities for community input when developing districts missions, core belief and vision. Of course, we don't do that every year. Um, we probably do that every like five to six or seven years, but we'll probably have an opportunity coming up. Um, you know, the change, uh, adopting long range priorities. Um, we, we felt like we were either not sure or didn't think we did a great job on that. Um, the board uses the district's mission, core beliefs and vision to drive district performance. Um, and the board adopts clear and measurable indicators to assess district performance. Um, so if we think of that, um, I guess we should try and figure out what would be a good goal to propose. Um, to help start making us feel like, well, feel like we're doing stronger on that. Um, trying to think of what a good suggestion might be. I don't know, does someone have a suggestion on what we could take as a goal for that while I pull up my notes?
Do, do you want to talk it through again? I, I didn't quite catch the, what is the level of specificity we're getting here?
Um, so what we're trying to do is say like, hey, we want to try and make an improvement in this area. So I don't think we have to get down to, I mean, unless we have a suggestion of like, if we do this, we're gonna go all green on, on these indicators in the future. Um, but it could also just be like, okay, we don't know what to do. So why don't we have a board member go off and maybe talk with the superintendent or one of the people in the cabinet and figure out like, well, what could we do to set this stuff up better? Um, so like for the indicators part, I would say maybe it's not, um, you know, maybe it's not like, let's pick indicators right now. Like that doesn't have to be the goal, but maybe it's more like, how can we tie our mission and vision? You know, like, let's go in and say like, let's have a plan for how we're gonna tie our mission, vision and, and values into um, our decision making more closely.
Sounds like a strategic discussion.
It could be. Yeah, yeah.
So I'll just, I'll, I'll reiterate what I, uh, mentioned earlier, which I guess was untimely, but I, I think a good goal would be to develop together a, basically a governance calendar on accountability. So I think that will force us to have the discussion of what are the things that we really care about, which should reflect our district's mission, core police and vision. And will also reflect which are the specific metrics that we are really gauging performance on and how are we gonna look at that throughout the year?
Okay. So. And those could be the LCAP. You're not saying that those are not the LCAP. You're just saying like, we just want to make.
I think, I mean, my personal opinion is like, we should be narrower. The LCAP is very long with a lot of metrics. I think we, we should be more discerning in what specifically we, we want to, to focus on.
Okay. So what I hear you saying is like, maybe we should have a, a goal to adopt like maybe three of them. And it's like, these are the ones that were three to five student indicators that we're gonna look at and say, these are the ones that, I, obviously, when I say adopt, I don't mean into, you know, the LCAP or something, but the ones that we're gonna say at the board level, these are what we're looking at and want to be able to follow.
Identifying as our focus areas or whatever for the year. And then having the discipline of, and this is how we will be evaluating our, our performance.
Okay.
Throughout a, a given year.
Okay, so. So adopt three to five. And again, like I said, we can pick them from existing ones. You're not saying we have to go create new ones or start something over.
I hope we don't have to.
Yeah, exactly.
Then the assumption is that those three that we've picked will drive a decent amount of our agenda items throughout school year or?
No, I don't think, I think it's more just having clarity. I, and maybe this is part of the, this is all bleeding into the orientation of like, I just don't know when things are coming up. But I think us knowing and having the foresight of, okay, we should expect uh, if we take chronic absenteeism as an example, like that's something we really care about this year. That's not saying, that means we're gonna have a meeting every single time where we talk about chronic absenteeism. But it is saying, we know that this is a focus area and we believe that we should be checking in on this on a, a semi annual basis or a quarter or whatever, whatever is the right cadence. Like we just have identified that.
I see.
We're gonna go in.
So what you're really saying is, let's clarify. What are like the three to five student indicators the board should really be focused on? Out of all the ones that are out there and at what cadence should we be looking at it? Cause right now, we don't really know. Like if it's student success, is it only at I ready time or not at I ready time? Which ones are end of year? Which ones aren't end of year? Like, when can we look at all of that stuff? And just bringing clarity to that to the board is kind of, is almost kind of what I hear you saying is.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a much better summary.
Okay. So bring clarify which three to five student success metrics we should be looking at. Um, out of all the ones that are, we should make our priority ones to look at. We'll obviously look at all the data. Um, it's all important. Um, and figure out when the, the timeline is. Okay. Uh, so that, that could be a goal for, um, uh, setting direction indicators. Yes. Oh, yes, okay. Um, then for, uh, we had set a time for strategic dialogue tied with, uh, meeting craft. So I thought maybe we could do those, uh, together. I think, I think this was the one that got disenfranchised. Um, but it feels to me like that's kind of, they, they could be kind of related. We could kind of put them together. Um, so is there a goal for how we can improve, like what we should do to improve our meeting craft?
I, uh, did have some suggestions.
Okay.
There, but yeah, just, I think.
Yeah, throw them out again.
So postmortem, so like after every meeting, just even if it's just like a sentence, capture what could have been better about that meeting, right? Um, then we have to have obviously someplace to go and put that in review. Um, I.
Yes, we'll need guidance on if we can, if we can do that, but that's a great one. Okay.
Probably the, so just to, I, I, I'm, I'm making things up as we go. But, um, I could imagine a standing agenda item at the beginning of every meeting where we share our feedback about how the prior meeting could have gone better.
Um, yes.
That'd be one way of doing it. I'm not saying that's the best way.
So why don't we make it a goal? If, do people think that this is a good way to focus on like strategic stuff and like, and the meeting craft and kind of fit into that area to improve those, those indicators there? Why don't we make it the first, Cecilia? Does that sound like being able to just come back and reflect on how did this meeting go? What could we do better? What are we missing?
Yes, um, but one of the things too with the meeting craft and talking about, I forget, cause I don't have it in front of me. Um.
Me neither, but I can tell.
The item and for how long?
Yes.
That would have to be something that in order for the meeting to flow smoothly, is like, how much time are we gonna dedicate to that particular topic? When in fact, it's something that we're gonna talk about, that something that happened at the prior meeting. I mean.
Right.
Everybody has different opinions, so.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be, I mean, it's a good idea. It's just, how much time are we gonna dedicate? And maybe, or maybe if it's taking longer, then maybe it could be something that could be agenda is at another meeting where um, then we're not violating the Brown Act and all that.
Right. So may, maybe a simpler way to do it is just at the end of every meeting, right before we adjourn, we, we, we do a quick round robin. Hey, how did this meeting go? Is there anything that we could have done better about this meeting?
Let's.
And in that way, it's real time, it's timely, it's not taking up a lot of time in the next meeting. It doesn't need to wait for the next meeting. I just.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
I, um, so yeah, I hear what we're saying and I think that, um, we should just, just, I think the goal should be then to establish a process to provide per meeting feedback. We can evaluate, we can send someone off to evaluate what those are.
Then in terms of, um, I, I, I think trustee Lee had a great suggestion on the prior topic to go and set up a calendar for review of strategic goals and objectives and like how progress is looking, uh, o- over the course of the year. And I think that is related to, uh, when we are establishing our meeting calendar for the year, looking at what stuff do we want to talk about, right? Having that kind of stack rank of like, well, what are important topics for us to discuss? We probably can't get to everything, maybe even in the course of the year. And, and then just, and maybe this is, this was something I was thinking we would get done at the retreat. We, we'd go and map it out and say, well, we're gonna talk about meaty topic X at this meeting date that otherwise does not have a super packed agenda. We're gonna talk about meaty topic Y at this other date that doesn't have a super packed agenda and so on and so forth. So we sort of build a content calendar effectively, or when are we gonna have the meaty discussions?
Yeah.
That help provide strategic guidance to the district.
Yeah. So I do, I mean, our calendar does have some of this stuff in it on there. So I think that maybe we want to just review the way the future business items are on the calendar.
Yeah, my, my perspective is that most of what's there is given to us and is not directed by the board, right? They're, they're not subjects that the board is itching to discuss. They're subjects that are either statutorily required to be presented to us or, or that are, are determined by staff that they're going to go and present.
Last, when I looked at last, I think there's a suggestion of topics at the bottom, like that are getting slotted in there that are not the one, that are more like, how's this thing, this program doing, stuff like that. But, but again, I'll take it as a goal to, to review the agenda for the future and say like, you know, how do we, how do we fill that into the process there? Um, I think that seems like a, a good goal for someone to work on. Um, okay. And then that was that one, setting direction indicators was the other one, board development and onboarding. Um, what would be a good goal for that? Would it just be, um, develop an onboarding handbook? Maybe that would be a good start. Yeah.
Sarah Leah and then Tyler.
A cheat sheet.
A cheat sheet or a few pages.
Okay.
I mean, there, there's a lot of things that if you don't know, I mean, I don't know, right? You as a superintendent, but there may be other questions that, I mean, like I would appreciate if say, for instance, cabinet can actually chime in and help the board out when needed, because maybe we think that we're doing the right thing, but the educators know what's best, so.
I, I would, I would, I would say maybe we don't need an orientation handbook so much as we just beef up the governance handbook.
Yeah, for sure. And we have, we have revisions from.
Yeah.
The session with Luann.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think, yeah, if we make it in a, an annual goal to like revisit and revamp it with all the stuff. We're talking about a lot of stuff.
Okay.
Um, uh, that might be a good way to, um, to just prepare for any onboarding that happens with new trustees. So like to keep us surprised of like all the things we're doing to be current on it. And then if there's, uh, turnover, then it's ready at hand.
So are you saying that there should be a goal to review the governance handbook annually?
Yes.
Okay. Which we kind of already did, like we could, right? Check, but, okay.
We, we took the survey before that was released.
Um, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I was just wondering like, did that, like that kind of thing that we just, maybe not as involved on that one. Maybe we just have like a person or two go off and say, what's missing in the governance handbook? What are we doing that's different than this practice and put that in?
Yeah, no, I think that's right.
Okay. Okay. So I think we have three things here that we thought would, um, improve the way that we operate. One was clarify which of the three, I mean, obviously working with the Dr. Baker and whoever you wanted to alligate this to, but help us clarify which three to five student success, um, metrics. You know, the board thinks and, and you think we should all be focused on, um, and what the review cadence is and sort of have that upfront. Um, so that we are doing all of this work, um, and happening in there. I think it's just that setting the expectations and making sure that's clarified for everyone. Um, establishing a process to provide per meeting feedback. Um, we have to figure out exactly how that works. That's in compliance with the Brown Act. Um, and then review the, the way the, 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 the set of the agenda for the future. Um, and then review the governance handbook annually. Um, so we need someone to. Can I pick a trustee to sort of own this goal and maybe they can talk with you about how to take it forward from there? Okay, is that right? Um, is, can, does someone want to be the owner for clarifying which three to five student success? Um, and talk about it with Dr. Baker and his next, and your next one on one of how to proceed on that?
I, I can't. I, I do actually think that the identification piece should be a full board exercise.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I mean, by all means, I think we're gonna come back and talk about it. Like if that's, if that's the case of like, hey, we think we should come in and have this agenda item to come in and do it. Um, but we'll, we'll schedule a check in on how these things are doing. Maybe in today's September, we can check in in December or January, probably December. I think December is a quieter month. No? Yeah, yeah. Uh, January is not really quiet either. No, this January is gonna be busy. Oh yeah, this December is gonna be busy too. Maybe we can check in in like February and see how we did on, on making progress on these goals. And obviously if something comes up beforehand, um, we can put that in. We'll figure out a time to check in on it. Um.
Yes, I can be the person as I brought it up.
Um, and then establishing a process to provide per meeting feedback and review the agenda for the future. Okay, David Weekly, um, yeah. And again, it, we'll see, we'll see how it does. I mean, the, the outcome will be for this will be, do we think that we're actually doing a better job as a governance team? Um, and, uh, do we think that, um, you know, it's, uh, going to, uh, improve our, you know, our, how we evaluate, uh, our perception of how we're doing our work? Anything else to add?
Thank you for all that you're doing for us. So I appreciate your.
Yes, your self evaluation too. It's not just mine.
Oh, of course. Yeah.
You know, you all take the survey and put it in, so. Uh, I don't know if this is gonna be helpful, honestly. Um, we'll find out. I think that'll be part of, uh, we should be honest with it of like, do we think that doing this is helpful or not? There's a lot of different ways for us to do self evals. That, it's our first time, so I think we can be, um.
I, I, I remain a little bit hungry to learn from the new trustees, ways in which their onboarding could now be completed. Uh, having not given them the best polished, uh, onboarding experience. What, what are, what are some things yet remaining that we could do to finish fully onboarding both of you?
I, I actually think this survey was very helpful because the questions led me to things that I hadn't. I, I actually think this survey was very helpful because the questions led me to things that I hadn't even been exposed to or been thinking about. So maybe timing wise, doing this, I don't know, I mean, I guess it's not super helpful for a new trustee to answer some of these questions, but at least seeing the questions or providing to them upfront when they join is probably helpful. Still thinking about how we update our governance handbook. I think we'll have to be careful in the level of detail we need to put in there. But maybe even having some side FAQ that Cecilia was kind of, some kind of informal FAQ might be like what we're, yeah, cheat sheet.
Great, and you know, you, you reminded me, by the way, with AEC coming up. And we kind of picked these three areas that we're focused in. We should, should take a look at the sessions that are relevant to, particularly if you took one of the priority areas. Like, it might be worth looking at some of those as a way to like get ideas and inspiration about like, how are people doing it and pull that stuff in and kind of focus on that part. I think that these three things might be, that's another good board development area. And since we've identified areas that we want to develop, it might make sense to like overlap that on AEC course selections or session selections. Cool, did you want to add anything on the onboarding and then otherwise we'll move on? The onboarding? No, it didn't make it. It was, uh, did we just have review the governance handbook? Onboarding was, uh, that's what we, it sort of came out with like, uh, review the governance handbook. We didn't assign it because we, we just kind of did a session on it, so we'll come back and review it. Unless you think we should do more for a specific one. But we can add a, add a third goal of review the governance handbook for on, onboarding?
I'm loathe to assign myself homework.
No, 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 I'm, I'm happy to take that one. I'm, I'll happy to go through it. I have to.
No, I was just, I was just thinking that because Jen and I are the most recently oriented, whether or not we should, whether or not it'd be helpful for us to like somehow brain dump the things that like we didn't know that would have been helpful into the, the governance handbook or something.
Well, we're gonna have an item to adopt our governance handbook with the changes that Luann brought in. So I don't know when that's gonna come, but that would be an excellent time. Yeah, so whenever we want to bring it, if you want to think about suggestions in there.
And if there is an informal supplement to that, if like here is the cheat sheet, here's the stuff I wish, here's the one page of information I wish somebody had given to me.
Yeah, but I think the, the thing that's important is that getting in that cadence of reviewing it and then re adopting it. So that we're making sure that we're putting it in and then we're giving everybody an opportunity of like this thing is missing it. So I think that that, having that as the goal is really probably the important one. And then, yes, these are other tactical things that we can roll into it. Great, we have one public comment that I think we missed. So I will go back, take the public comment and then we'll wrap up the meeting. I don't know who it's from.
Oh, okay, thank you. I know I'm not in the agenda, so I really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I thought that the public comments came at the end of the board meeting, so I apologize that I was mistaken. I'll try to keep my comments succinct. So my name is Jackie Selby and I'm the parent of an incoming TK student at Orion Alternative School. And I wanted to share our family's experience and some concerns about one of the district's vendors for aftercare, Catalyst Kids. So on August 13th, the first day of school, there were more than 70 families at Orion who had applied to Catalyst Kids who were waitlisted for aftercare and they were not informed on the first day of school that they were on the waitlist. The parents had made concerted efforts to call customer service, email the site coordinator, and we had formed a group on WhatsApp. And Catalyst Kids, I have to say, had a perfect record of non, non-response to all of our efforts to reach out through email. So we were told by other parents, don't worry, they often let you know the night before school starts. It always works out. But for 70 families, it did not work out this year. And they were left scrambling without aftercare on the first day of school and working with each other to find temporary solutions. I have heard cases of moms who have taken absence from work to try to work this out and in other really difficult situations. There are families that are considering transferring schools mid-year because this is a really serious problem. Now, per my understanding, Catalyst Kids opened one classroom, but none of the incoming TK children received a spot unless they had younger sibling priority. Now, this situation was avoidable. Catalyst Kids knew in the spring that there were two new classrooms that the school had made available to them. And as part of their contract with the district, they understand, having been working with the district for decades, that they are responsible for obtaining and maintaining the licenses for these classrooms. They have had many months to do so and they have not, compounding this, they have not communicated that this is the situation until I reached out by phone to the site coordinator to ask what was going on so that I could share this with the parents who are wondering why there was only one classroom and not three classrooms and what the timeline was and whether we would ever hear an update from Catalyst Kids about whether we would get into aftercare. Now, we're now four weeks into the year. The families still have no timeline for when those two new classrooms will open and they are left in complete limbo about their status on the waitlist. I do know from speaking to Catalyst Kids that even when they do open those classrooms, not all the families will be served. And they should really, on top of the general communication, be letting families know if they are very, very unlikely to get care, even when they do license the new classrooms.
All right, thank, thank you. Thank you for sharing your experience. I just wanted to check, did you, were you, I don't, we don't need to know what's going on. And then is there a correct person at the district that she should be talking to?
We've, we're working on it.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they have two extra classrooms which they, we, we agreed to. And, yeah, I have an email here from Rihanna House, House. Rihanna House, who is the.
Rihanna Hull, the site coordinator.
Huss, is it Huss? H U S S? Regarding the fire marshal has come out and cleared for licensing. We are currently waiting for licensing to schedule our visit. We have called and left messages to get a timeframe and have not heard back from him yet. And this was done last week on, this is from Friday of last week. And Winnie's been on top of it, so I know Rick, you know about it. So there's, we have said that we might have to go out and look for another vendor. But it's really late for us to look for a vendor too, because they've all been taken up. But Catalyst Kid asked for the two rooms, they got them.
Okay, well, thank you again for bringing up the comment and I'm glad to hear that it's, it's being looked into.
I know it's a difficult situation right now, but I wanted to raise this issue.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
From the vendor for decades.
All right, we have to keep comment limited to three minutes, just to be fair. Yeah, we can't have a back and forth conversation. Thank you though. Okay, so we have just like the last couple items here. I think it's correspondence. Anyone have correspondence to share? Seeing none, we'll move on. Other business suggested items for future agenda? Trustees calendar, meeting, meeting calendar, or anything there?
No changes to the calendar.
And adjournment action required.
I need to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, perfect. Thank you, everyone.